Take board of education is now called to order. We have a short video and then we'll go to number 15.
We do, so prep yourself. You had four good videos this morning, but this one is in-house and it is spectacular. We're ready. You ready for the video? You need me to break kill a little more time?
No, I got it.
I'm not even gonna give it an intro because you'll see it fits right in with the topic. Yeah, turn our volume up just a little.
There's only one test taken by students in every state of America that shows how well we're doing in reading and math.
It's taken every two years and it's called the NAEP.
NAEP?
The National Assessment of Educational Progress.
NAEP?
A lot of people call it the nation's report card.
It's like a school report card that tells us how well we're doing in school. The main difference, we don't get a grade.
Our teachers and schools don't get a grade either.
But the state does.
Students are selected to take the NAEP.
But those few students represent the whole state.
Important people give their opinion of Alabama education from NAEP results.
Lawmakers.
Business leaders.
That's why it's important that we perform well on the NAEP.
We represent everybody.
Everybody.
Represent for NAEP.
You thought, I think I recognize some of those young people. That young lady is Dr. Sibley's daughter. And the young man is Shane. You don't see Shane all the time, he's sitting back there. He can wave at us through that window. But Shane does all of our video for us and the young man is Shane's son. And they filmed that. A great video, we're gonna push that out on social media, so. We would appreciate them.
Thank you.
They wrote the script and did it all.
Dr. Mackey, you know we have some university representatives here. Dr. Meyer, we're gonna start with number 15.
Yes, ma'am. So, Dr. Kathy Wetzel, University of Alabama, she has an engagement this afternoon. So, we're gonna let her go first. And I don't know, Dr. Meyer, if you wanna come up? This is just a regular, and Dr. Wetzel. We're gonna let her come up because I want Dr. Wetzel to answer any questions y'all have. She's associate dean, I think officially, but she's what we call certification officer at University of Alabama and does an amazing job. And unless we can talk her out of it in the next 15 minutes, is planning to retire at the end of this calendar year. They've already brought Emily Sims, Dr. Sims was at Jacksonville State. And actually, she and I worked together, she taught seventh grade English for me when I was superintendent in Jacksonville. A wonderful lady, so the university's done well. But Dr. Wetzel, it may be hard to fill your shoes and we appreciate your work. And I would like, not only this program, but just if you have questions in general about the university, this is the lady who can answer them. I don't know, Dr. Meyer, turn it to you. I'm not even sure which exact program you're approving.
We're looking at Class A Elementary STEM, which is intended to work, as I understand it, with folks who already have Class B in elementary education and will learn, learning to emphasize STEM topics as they teach. And then the second proposal is for Class AA Math Specialist, which will fit nicely with the fact that you all have already authorized Jacksonville State University to develop an elementary math specialist as well. So, these fit together very well. Dr. Wetzel's background is gifted education, so the university's always doing creative things. Any questions you have, I've told you all I know about it and a little bit more, so your question will go to Dr. Wetzel.
Dr. Wetzel, I know somebody wants to ask this question. What's your enrollment look like this month?
STEM, a little bit undergraduate, graduate enrollment is up. Really up. But the undergraduate, I mean, we're working on it, but right now, it's a little down from the last fall.
Two thousand students, a thousand students?
In separating the non-Cert from the Cert, probably, I mean, we probably have 2,000. But when you talk about unconditionally admitted to teacher ed program, you know, 250.
Dr. Wetzel? I'm Wayne Reynolds. I was asked if I'm a fan of the University of Alabama and I certainly am. And I admire your programs. My granddaughter is a Randall student and we know the Randall's program.
Yes.
And I wanna ask how successful you are in the payment for students to get the immunization. That's an issue we're all facing at various levels. And since you're here and you've had such a broad background and are gonna get to retire at the end of the year, we are not. Tell us about what your perception of that success. It may be off-topic, but I know you're in leadership.
The payment, the payment for students?
Yes, ma'am, and how successful that is and how much.
I think it's been very successful. It's amazing to me, you know, when you put $25 and then $40 and then $50 on a student at a bar where they can go.
$200, I think.
It's gone up, yes, but that started very low. But to my knowledge, it's been very successful.
And you haven't had many complaints about students talking about their positions of their rights and not wanting to take the money? My granddaughter glad to take the money.
I have not heard any student that said otherwise, but you know, that's not something I do, but personally, I've not heard that.
Well, I know you're in leadership. It's very gratifying for me to hear the success the University of Alabama has had in that program.
Dr. Wetzel, I just wanna say, as a member of the Education Advisory Committee, one thing that I want to applaud their programs for is that a number of the programs, I know, are in-person, but a number of the programs are online. And I think in our meetings, we have found that that has attributed to more people enrolling into classes. So, I just wanted to applaud you all for your efforts there.
Thank you. Our graduate, our advanced programs, for the most part, are online. Our initial programs are not, but that's, that may be one reason our advanced program growth ambition has grown so much.
Yes, well, I just wanted to applaud you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I just wanna applaud this program. It's so innovative and it meets the need for STEM education. And so, I applaud you having the initiative to apply for this and go for it because so many of our schools are begging for more, more quality in math instruction and our teachers are hungry for it. And so, I applaud your effort.
Thank you. I think, I think these will both work. One's at the Class A Level Masters and it is pre-teacher six. The other one, there are two routes. One, and probably because so many elementary teachers that have a master's degree in elementary have taken that middle school math practices and they're teaching middle school math. So, this is an option for them as well to move up in grades K through eight and with a double A certificate, which would be a good thing. And then those who are secondary that took the middle school can do the fourth to the 12th grade. So, that would be another incentive for them.
I hope you'll report back to us.
I'd love to.
The numbers and the successes in any way that would never help you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Murray.
Thank you.
Enjoy your time. Dr. Meyer, stay there for just a minute.
Probably, you're not, yes.
Yeah? I'm afraid you, she'll take you over there to RSA building. Do you, I know we have some folks here from Troy and others. I don't know if we have any other programs on, but we wanted, Dr. Richardson wanted to recognize anybody else we had here from college. They wanted to answer questions.
Troy delegation has decided to join us for every meeting, which I. We have tried for decades to encourage representatives from our institutions, especially those on the agenda to be here, and the message has been heard.
Anything from Troy? They'll have anything you wanna add since you're here?
Your hearing's for Troy, talk.
No, we asked them last week about their enrollment last month.
We did.
So, I would say thank you for having us. And we enjoy coming and learning and working together.
We're glad to have you, always glad.
As a former assistant superintendent in Troy, I'm grateful to have you here. Dr. Hawkins is a longtime personal friend of mine and I know the university has expanded dramatically and I'm proud of all the work each of you do. And Troy has a special place in my heart as having been on Hampton Avenue, you know where that is off the university. So, it's great to have you here and for the great work you do, providing an education to so many students in South Alabama and all over Alabama.
And Ms. West and Dr. Chessant and myself, we had a Zoom meeting with your in-service center director. And so, that was Dr. Reinemann. It was wonderful and wonderful things are going on. So, we applaud you for embracing that as well because it's vitally important to our school. So, thank you on that regard. It was very informative, learned a lot, and we're going to continue our discussion on a quarterly schedule.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, updates from state superintendent back to number one. A assessment data overview.
We have two big ones today. So, Ms. Martin, if you wanna come up, I don't know if you wanna bring your team with you and you want them to come on up too?
Yes, Chantia and Maggie.
So, Chantia Washington, Maggie Hicks, Angela Martin. I'm gonna set it up just a little bit and say, and then they are really gonna do this presentation on assessment. Now, we have two huge topics here because one, of course, is our assessment data and the other one is, is the foundation program request. And so, we'll see, Dr. Richardson, where we get, if you wanna wait to do the other one after lunch. That'll be myself and Ms. Craig, so there's no outside people that have to be here. But with the assessment data, I wanna remind you of a couple of things before they get started. So, first is you're about to see real numbers that are unverified. So, the districts are verifying there and these are state-level unverified data. Now, the truth is that the verification process at the local level, it may shift some schools' data. And so, we don't release district or school data until they're verified. But the state level, it is unlikely that we're gonna see a dramatic shift in state numbers. You know, even if one school's numbers, something happened, they were all way off, it's not gonna affect the whole state. So, we're releasing these numbers and the public will get to see them. But I wanna, again, I've got to remind you, they are unverified. And then the second thing is, for the public, I know board members know this, but for the public, don't call your districts, your superintendents and all that and say, I wanna see our school's number on school. Because they don't have, they're working right now on verifying those data. And then on September 27, that will all be public. So, we'll have public data and they'll go through this in a minute on September 27 for district-level stuff, but none of that today. Okay, the third thing, I wanna just say this upfront before they get into the numbers. The numbers are down. I've told the media that, I've told doctors. I mean, I, we don't want them to go down, but I would tell you this, if our numbers were better this year, I would question what our schools actually do in a non-COVID year. I mean, last year was a horrible year for teachers. We had students who were in school part of the time, they were out of school part of the time. We had, we had, we had students die, we had teachers die, we had parents die. I mean, it was just a rude idea. And so, and the test results are gonna show that, that our numbers are down. And there's a lot of reasons for that. And these three ladies, I mean, they can, they can talk whirlwinds around me, so I'm gonna let them get into the actual data. But remember, it's a new test. We're one of only two states trying to roll out a new test during COVID, us and New Mexico. And they actually may be in worse shape than we because they were not able to get the participation rate that we were. So, we did get 93% participation state-wide, but they're gonna, they're gonna touch you a little more about how that, that's not true for every district. But just realize, these numbers, they give us a 30,000-foot view and we need that view. And we need to focus on the things that we have to do, like supporting our reading coaches, getting math coaches out there, doing the work that we know, that the plan the board already has for raising achievement is the right plan. It's just, we got our legs knocked out from under us with COVID. Now, I am, I don't, I mean, y'all know, I've talked to each one of you individually and I've talked publicly about it. I am very worried about this year, at this point. We, you know, the first week we reported on the school COVID dashboard, we had over three, we had over 4,000 positive cases. And that's children and adults tied to a school. At the height of the pandemic last year, at the worst year, we had less than 4,000. I think 3,300, but 33, or might've been 38, but it was below 4,000. At the worst, the worst it ever got. We had 4,000 this year, the second week of school. We had 9,100 the next week. The report, this, this report won't come out, it won't, in the calculation process now, but I can tell you, it's probably gonna be well over 10,000. So, so we are a month into school and our positivity rate is 300% what it was last year at the very worst week. Now, we've got more kids in school though because we've learned. So, we learned ways to keep kids in-person instruction even with this massive outbreak. But, but as y'all know, y'all all got schools in your districts that have had to go remote. Some are, some are going remote. We're trying to keep them just going, say, two weeks at a time and then reassessing. But some superintendents have gotten to the end of their two weeks and say, we gotta add another week because we're not ready to come back yet. We don't have enough adults to staff our school yet. So, so I am worried about this year, but, but we're, but you know, it's both sides of the scale. I believe that we did, this summer, we had record turnout for our summer reading camps. Montgomery County normally has 2,500 kids to come for summer reading camps. They had 12,000 voluntarily. Nobody told them they had to come, nobody, the, the ALA was not in effect, so there was no thing that they had, you know, if you don't come, then you, in fear of promotion or, they just want to learn to read. But at the same time, we're dealing with, you know, you've heard the word before, unprecedented public health emergency. And, and anyway, it's gonna be hard on our teachers this year, but we're hoping the numbers get better. We've certainly learned to live with it because we've got more kids, again, in classrooms today than we had last year at this time, even though we have many more positive cases. And the key out is to get, and I know we're gonna come back to your board questions and talk about COVID, but you almost can't talk about the test questions without talking about COVID because it is a, it's, it's an additional factor that has made it very hard this year. That being said, board members, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Martin and let them go through the real data. Ask all the questions you want. Know that many of the questions you have won't be answerable yet, but we will, we're gonna continue to dig deeper and deeper in the data as they get verified and we get that and we're able to look at, you know, more specific things locally in districts. We'll be able in the coming months to compare districts that were mostly remote last year to districts that were able to do more in-person instruction. You know, they won't be able to do all that today because you've got state-level data, but just know, we are gonna dig into those things and you can help guide us into things you'd like to see. So, we'll know as our, these smart ladies are digging into it, that they'll know what, you know, what exactly are people asking for. So, that's, that's my introduction. Ms. Martin, floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Just to remind us that it is state-level raw, unvetted data. The districts are working right now to validate their data and the deadline for that verification is September 21. At that point, we will start our state-level processes with that data and hope that we could have public information by September 27 on district and school-level data. In saying that, just to go over the actual assessments that we were able to administer this spring, the access for ELLs was actually available for K through 12. ACT write-in, we used that for 11th grade accountability. Our A-CAP alternate was for 2 through 8, 10 and 11. A-CAP summative, 2 through 8, pre-ACT 10. And your ACT work keys were actually 12th grade, but it's optional. Remember, that's utilized for our CCR component. And just to elaborate a little right there, you see second grade on there. Second grade was actually added to our assessment stream for growth purposes. That is what is used to calculate the growth for the third grades as well as pre-ACT. Pre-ACT is used to calculate growth for your high school students. And let us just remember, September 21, I know we want to see district and school-level data, but let's give them a chance to actually go through it and make certain all of the profiles, the data is actually there for their students that participated in the assessment. Your ACT with writing, this is raw state-level assessment data and you should have it actually in your profile. But before we just jump to that, I want to go to the page that says Spring 2021 Participation Rate. If you look at that data, it's going to say Science, Math and ELA. Basically, when you look at those, they're 93% overall participation rate. But I want us to be mindful that there's a lot of disparity going across the districts when it comes to participation rate. We've looked at some of them in the background, why they're actually verifying that data. And we have districts that are 100% participation rate and then we have districts as low as 52%. So, when we start actually doing comparisons on districts, once the data is actually available, starting September 27, what we want to do is to make certain that we're really looking at the data for what it is, the groups of students that were actually tested. And then we're able, at that point, to go to the dashboard that Dr. Mackey was mentioning. So, if they had a 52% testing participation rate, were they virtual? Were they face-to-face? Can we look at the Alabama Public Health Dashboard and look at the COVID impact to that district? I think those are the things that we need to lay on top of the data to make certain that we're really making true decisions about where we need, what we need to do and what supports we need to provide for those districts, if that makes sense. And just so that we can let Mrs. McRae know what we're going through, this is our actual packet, this is the embargoed data that we're actually going through, that was emailed to you, Ms. McRae, that was actually emailed to you. So, we're actually going through that slide now and we're gonna remember that the district and school-level data will be embargoed until September 21. And at this time, I'm gonna transition over to both Chantia and Maggie and they're going to dig through the actual data with you.
I have that information. Thank you.
You're welcome, just from there.
Okay, so within your package, you see the next page is, of course, our percentage of students tested by proficiency level, so we broke that out for assessment. And ACT with writing is your first slide there, according to that. You will see that we broke it out by ELA, Math and Science, so that you can see the total number of students tested and then what percentage of students were proficient or what percentage of students met each level. As you see, we have the top levels, the proficient, we are lower, as Dr. Mackey stated, we're a little bit lower than we have been in the past. Our overall ACT, average ACT score for the state composite was 17.2 for this past year.
How does that compare to previous years?
The previous year was 18.2. That was 2020. And then if we go back one year prior to that, it was like 18.1. So, it's, it like went, dropped one point from this past year.
And that's given in the fall?
No, no, sir. The ACT is given in the spring.
But we got that 2020 in before we closed.
We did.
Spring 2020.
Yes. We had about, yes, sir, we had about, I think it was like 86% or something like that that tested in 2020 at the time.
So, 18.1?
Yes.
It would be important to note though, for 2021, there were varying time frames because we extended that window of opportunity for students to actually take the assessment. So, that's another consideration that you wanna take into, that you think will help.
And we extended every window that we were afforded in a window for every one of our assessments.
How does the, pardon, wait a minute, how does the number tested vary between this test date and the last year? Can you, I know that's not part of your normal data. Did we see fewer tests or more tests or about percent?
We did. And that's one of the, and one of the analysis that we're going to do, because it's just as important to see who tested, but how many did not test. So, that's one of the reports that we're gonna be running to see who did not test in which area.
Is this, that decision is the critical factor that you have to delight, determine relative to y'all. Thank you very much, that's why I asked.
And to answer your question, it was down. Usually, we have, we go with the enrollment and this patent for 21, I think the enrollment was like 49,000 for the 11th grade or something around that. I can't remember, but I think, I think it was like 49,000 for the 11th graders at the time.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you knowing that without it runs one.
No problem at all.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you had a question? It seems like this has been true in the past and I just wanted to verify if it was still true, that if a student, let's say they take it and they score 17 in the 11th grade and then they retake it in the 12th grade, that is, that score, let's say they go to a 25, second time they take it, that 25 is not averaged into this.
You are correct. Because this is only our state-level 11th grade data.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure it was still true.
That is true.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's a great question because that, every year, we get some question from some of the media or somebody, that the number we released doesn't match the number ACT put out for Alabama, they're different numbers. And that's because they release the highest score that student had, that they, of all the administrations they ever took for their senior year, we released just what we gave at school.
And I think our LEAs would really like to have the highest score.
Sure.
As a part of their accountability and their report card. And so, I'm just mentioning that because I hear that a lot.
Ms. McCarthy, as a superintendent, I assure you that we maintain the records of the highest scores. We made certain our counselors, because there are instances that I've known that you had a 32 and a 36 literally from one year to another. So, I know our local school districts will correct those statistics because we know, those of us that have been in public life, how important the ACT scores are and the universities now are requiring a higher ACT score than entered in. I don't think I could get into college now, but the ACT scores are elevated, so our keeping, our elevated ACT scores are important in their career development. Right, ladies? Don't let me mistake, mistake the reality.
Keep him in line.
That's not possible.
Okay, the next page begins our summative that you all have been waiting for. Two years waiting. Again, this, we broke it out by content area. Of course, we administered in the spring. As we've already stated, we had an extended window. I think we extended the window for two weeks on the front end of the assessment so that they would test as many students as possible. And you can see the number there that were tested. And again, the testing grade usually runs about 55,000 to 52,000 for particular grade level.
Explain what Level 1, 2, 3 and 4 are.
Level 1 is the lowest proficiency that you can, and we took away the naming conventions because we didn't wanna put anything negative on it. So, right now, for all of our assessments, we don't have any naming conventions, they're just at the lowest level. And then proficient, if we were looking at proficient students, that's gonna be your Level 3 and Level 4.
So, Level 3, and that's what I, what is proficiency or?
Level 3 and Level 4.
Level 3 is the proficiency level. So, and so you add Level 3 and now Level 4 together to get the percentage proficiency for that particular age group. So, for example, grade 2 is 34%, right? Using my old algorithm. 23 and 11, 34.
Which grade?
For ELA?
Second grade.
I don't have ELA.
This is, so these are our ACAP, English Language Arts.
Oh, yeah.
Exactly right, so these are, so let me interrupt here for a minute, and these, let me make things more confusing so they can unconfuse it. So there's, there is a difference in English Language Arts and reading. Now, remember when we began to develop a new test, which was really the first task that I was challenged with when I became state superintendent, and we convened within a month, I think, and started that work. We decided that we would test English Language Arts, not just reading. So this also includes those grammar skills, it has a writing component, and soon, not this year, not the testing you have yet, it will have a listening component. We've already told the districts to be buying headphones or listening devices, because it'll have a listening response component. So we will test every part of English language except speech, and we're actually, there's discussion about how to do that, but that's very hard, of course, to stand, to do a standardized test on, you know, students giving, delivering a speech, though we think it's important. So the Literacy Act is just reading, and the law calls out, says we have to have a reading score. So what's, what is happening now is our vendor, Data Recognition Corporation, is taking just the reading questions and getting us a separate reading score. And I should have said this at the beginning, but that, in October, we will have another whole discussion just about reading and grade level reading, and we will have members of our technical advisory committee here from across the country, and we, and have people also available from DRC's technical advisory committee as needed to answer questions specifically about reading. But that's going to be really confusing to folks in the public, because there are children who could be on grade level on the ELA test, but not on grade level on the reading subcomponent. In general, I'm going to make a very generalized statement that's going to make all of those ladies squeamish. In general, you would say that level one, that level one is below grade level, levels two, three, and four are grade level and above. But the reason I'm saying that is, I want you to be careful, because if you say, oh, that means that 19% of our second graders are below grade level, that's on the English Language Arts test, that may, that number for reading will not be the same when you pull out just the reading component, okay? And that's a, and that's, I mean, I've had to, I went through this yesterday with a superintendent that didn't understand it, and I, and we've talked about it, and talked about it, and talked about it. But it, it is complex, but just realize that. And so we'll, as they continue today, and we talk about math too, but next month, we're going to really dig into the Literacy Act, the reading component, and then in the meantime, I look at Ms. Segler, because she's on the literacy task force, by then they'll have the verified data too, and we're going to ask them to look at it also and help give us some recommendations on that. But in general, the word proficiency, we attach to levels three and four. Remember, proficiency means really operating high grade level and above grade level, basic grade level, level two, below grade level, level one. So if you think about it in that category, how many of our second graders at the end of this year showed that on English Language Arts, they were performing below grade level 19%? Now, that's a very simplified version, that again, would make all the psychometricians squeamish, but that's pretty well, pretty close to what it is. Of course, they go, a lot of science goes into choosing those cut scores so that you know the difference in a level one and a level two. And I have to say this, again, for the benefit of the public, not so much the board, but you know, that cut score, and I don't remember what it is, I've seen it, but like, the difference in level one and level two might be, you know, 262 points is level one, 263 points gets you to level two. Obviously, there are ranges in there too, so that a child who scores 262 today, you know, it may have been a bad day for them, they might really be level three. And that's why we talk about the reading portfolios, we talk about, you know, looking at holistically other assessments too, because there are children that are going to be in these ranges that are close to the cut scores. But, but for reporting purposes, we have to choose the line, you know? It's just like, Dr. McCarty, you and Dr. Richardson, y'all have to give those passing scores, I mean, you've got students that are on the line sometimes, but there has to be, you know, has to be a cut score. So based on our cut scores recommended by the technical advisory committee, this is how students perform, and you'll see difference in math too, so.
May I ask a question?
Questions about in that? Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
So if I, just for myself, just doing some simple math, if I take, I'm on my summative page, ACAP summative, grade two, basically 57% of the 51,429 students tested, I just want to make sure I'm tracking, basically 57% were at level one and two. So if our, if our goal as the State Department, as the board, is to move those children to a level three, we're talking about 29,000, roughly 314 students, are we starting to analyze where on our math, across our districts, they are? Are we starting to look at that?
Yes, ma'am, that's one of the, again, the analysis that we're going to do now.
Okay, so when will we get that information? Next month?
Next month, we will have that available, because we, the districts and schools have certified their data now, and that will end on the 21st, and we will start performing our analytics at that point to the verified data.
I guess I'm wanting one more line, or column. I'm wanting one more column that gives me, and I can do it myself, I'm happy to sit and do it myself, but I would like to see big numbers, like 57% of our second graders, whatever the percentage is of the third, of the fourth, fifth grade band. So in my mind, I'm thinking a point of attack is to know exactly where each of these children are, and then if we can team some coaches and things together. I mean, I may not be following exactly as you are as educators, but I'm.
You're on the right track.
I feel like I need one, a couple more lines on this bit of information.
Yes, and we, once all of the data are reviewed, what normally occurs, and the reason why we haven't done it to that level today is because sometimes the numbers actually change a little bit, the percentages change a little bit. So just to give you just a small, not digging too deep in the woods on this, what the districts are doing now, and what we'll also have to do, is to do things such as ensuring that every student is accounted for, every student is matched appropriately to their assessment. Those are some of the things that we do behind the scenes before we actually produce an official report. And so once the official reports, because that will change if we do it too early, we'll go back and do double work. So once we've done all of those kinds of things, and we've put all those processes in place, and that is complete, then that's when we will, of course, we look to see what the high level, the preliminary numbers look like, but we then dig deeper and deeper to get to the level that you're talking about.
Okay.
So that is nothing for a bitch, you're, you're on track.
Okay.
I have a question, I think.
And after you.
Okay, I think Dr. Mackey may have answered it. So as we look at these proficiency levels, they're based upon the benchmark scores that the technical advisory committee put together. So when we look at this, these are the proficiency levels that have been established.
Yes, that's correct.
And just one additional comment, especially when we get into comparison of our assessment, let us remember also that spring 20, spring 2020, we waived assessments. So there will not be any assessments to compare this data to from spring 20. And then let us remember from spring 2019, we administered reading instead of ELA, so that's not a straight comparison when we start looking at those numbers, so that we can know that we have transitioned to a new subtest.
In addition to that, there's a new assessment altogether, so we definitely can't go back and come back.
The rigor.
The rigor and everything else.
And Dr. Richardson, may I come back to your question just a bit, I'm going to look at them too. Those, those cut scores could change a little bit, because they don't, so this is the first year, our technical advisory committee, as all of them would recommend, that you need two years of valid data to set the cut scores kind of in concrete. So they're, so they're, I mean, they're the cut scores we'll use for this year. But after another year of testing, they may come back and that, where I said 262, they might say, you know, that really needs to be a 270, that, or it needs to be a 255, because now we have more data.
Right.
And then one of our problems this year is we need two years of valid data, and there's some, obviously some question about how valid these data would be in a normal year. I know that, Ms. Hicks, isn't it true that when our, when that group of teachers, so we have a group of our own professionals that came in and looked at this and worked with the technical advisory team, but many of them, I understand, said, in a normal year, I know my children could do this, but this year, they did not, is that, I mean, you could better.
That is correct, they were very passionate about the tasks that they were assigned to do, but their comments kept coming to us, in a normal year, our students could have done so much better, or we know our students could have bitchmashed our students, we just know this is not a normal year.
And we also, in addition to what Dr. Mackey just stated, also part of our requirement in assessment is to look at each item, to make certain that the items on the assessment is of quality. So when you have a new assessment, that's another process that we also take to ensure that we have reliable test items as well.
Yes, Ms. Segler?
When it gets down, I know what now it comes from, the districts are looking and validating, so let's move beyond that point, when it actually is verified and released, will it be, when it relieved, each school will get their own data, correct? And then will it be disaggregated down, where it will be by gender, by grade level, by exceptionalities? And then from there, I remember, well, I used to be able to even click it, and it would tell me Billy, Sally, whomever, so that, speaking to the concern of Ms. West, it doesn't do you any good unless you can drill down to where the exceptionalities are, and are you, is it a weakness maybe in one or two kids, or is it a weakness in maybe my teaching methodology, or maybe more for professional development, because they're not doing, they're not getting the point across? Do you see what I'm trying to say? So will all of that be able to be drilled down to where they actually have the data that is imperative to move kids forward?
Yes, yes, definitely. And also an added piece to that, this fall, as we stated before, if I'm not mistaken, the performance matters, the analytics for a power school, we will have the assessment data included in there, so you will be able to look at all of the assessments. We have several, we have our early assessments, we have Scantron, and we're doing history to that data. So you will be able to go in there and dissect, and look at those trends, and determine what's needed for the students, definitely.
And a question, I can remember a long time ago, one of my children getting that SAT 10, maybe that's a long time ago, but, and you could go, I could go into the test as a parent and request the information and find out specifically which math skills were, were, he was weak on, right? And so will the parents be able to get very detailed, like, he was fine with multiplication, but he was weak in fractions, okay? You know, will, will I be able, and I know this is, this is ELA, but similar, maybe he was terrible with grammar, but, but good with writing?
Exactly, that's your student report, and yes, they will have their student reports, and also Maggie has a sample of that to show you what type of information she'd be more than happy to share with you, that the parent will be able to see, to have determined tutoring needs, or if there are any summer learning that they want to put the student in, looking at certain focuses on which objectives or standards that they may not be as strong with.
It's also that we have to think about the parents as well, I mean, it's all, yes, because we want the professional development and the extra intervention that we should need it, but also, you know, many parents want that, the detail and the information. And then will all of this, like, when the report comes out on the 27th, will it be public? I mean, the whole state of Alabama will have access to this, the, by ELA, by school, so Jacksonville City School, but also Kidney Stone, and I'll, I'll know, I can drill down and get into it.
Definitely, the current format that we have, that's on our public platform now with our website, there are spreadsheets that are there, and all of this information would live there, and you could drill down from the state level to the district to the school, and it also has a subgroup data there as well, so all of that, and that's the purpose of that 21st through the 27th, is to allow us now to grab that information and put it into that necessary format, because if you, as of right now, and I'm going to just say as of right now, because as Dr. Mackey indicated, we're constantly changing with COVID, but as of right now, we've only been, we've only applied for the waiver for the accountability system, that does not waive the public reporting of the assessment data.
Okay.
So that information would still be sitting in that platform. And before we go any further, Dr. Mackey, it was very, Maggie has her support team that's here, and when I say her support team, once they learned that she was presenting the ACAP summative, which is a part of DRC, and we started speaking of statisticians, just to show you how they, how committed they are with the work, they came to support Maggie, and this is the DRC statisticians, we have a couple that are here.
I have, I have Mark Giuliani, a research and psychometrician, psychometric, and then I have Rick Macardo, who actually is in, under, in that particular field also, but he was the one that led the standard setting for us. And I can't say, I have Kathy Tadgett, who is the program manager for summatives in my office, who is also my data guru, she has a lot of static statistics in her background from her previous employment in Florida.
Well, thank you.
I just wanted to take that opportunity to recognize them, because they hear us, when Dr. Mackey said that after two years of data, we're going to go back and we may have to reset some cut scores, they're listening, they hear Alabama needs this assessment, it was actually designed for us. So they're hearing us and they're supporting us through this process, so I just wanted to personally recognize them and thank them for the work.
And one more question, as I understand it, level one is, is below grade level, level two is basic, so that would be that you master what you should have in that grade.
Level three is what you should have.
Okay, so, so tell me, what is the distinguish, how, I'm trying to understand what the difference is between basic and proficient? And I know, like you say, it's probably a range, but if, if my child comes home and he's got level two, should I feel good about that, that he's really?
So I would say if he's level two, and I'm going to pass it back to them, and we talk about this structurally, but again, I'm going to make the, all the psychometricians and the real statisticians a little bit worried. If I, so I'm going to put a letter grade on it, but this is not, they don't line up with letter grades, exactly, but they, but I would be like, if, if my child came home with a level two, I'm going to be thinking they're like a C student, which means they've mastered enough of the coursework to move on, but that tells me that, that tells me that if I don't get them, you know, some extra tutoring, some extra help, and as they get into more difficult matter with math or reading, or difficult texts, then they're going to struggle more, and there is a good chance that they will move from a two, they could move back to a one, or they could be stuck into it, you know, they may finish at a two, which again, is enough to move on, but that's saying, what if that child wants to do, you know, complex math later on, or complex, you know, reading material, they're going to really struggle with that more depth and complex material, or it might, it might be writing. They, yes, they write fine, so it's not fair to say that they can't write, but can they write a level that will allow them maybe going to? But can they write a level that will allow them maybe going to certain careers that require technical writing?
Well, in Level 2, Dr. Mackey, would we allow, like, let's say the person bombed. They got a zero on every one of the grammar questions. But they did, you know, pretty good on the rest. Then we get back that assessment data and it shows that they bombed on grammar. Do we provide intervention support that says, okay, you got this other damn grade? You know, so we don't wanna mess with this, just keep doing what you're doing. But, but your grammar is terrible. You know, so we're gonna intervene and, you know, have an intervention program, an improvement plan, so that we can pull you up to speed by the, by the beginning of the next grade. So that you, we hope, have mastered wherever you are weak this year. And next year, you should be a Level 3 if you continue. I mean, do we have, do we plan to, to have that?
And that's where that analytics will show the schools exactly what is needed for the student. And then instructionally, they can align what is necessary to help that student to improve.
So it's not just for the Level 1?
It's for all students.
Okay, I misunderstood. I thought it was just for the Level 1.
Now, all students, this, the analytics, all of the student data will be loaded in that system. So you will be able to go in there, even on a Level 4 student, you will be able to go in there and see the strengths and weaknesses of that particular student as well. And that could even lead to enrichment activities for that particular student.
And that's a lot of what those coaches are doing in K-3. Those reading coaches, they're helping train teachers. The reading coach can't maybe look at every child's individual data. They're probably looking at it, but they can't dig deep in. But they're helping train teachers to look at those data and make instructional decisions. And that really, when we talk about training teachers in the science of reading, that's what it's. It's about teaching to that level, but especially what you're talking about. It's about helping our teachers identify interferences children have and how to remediate those or how to go back. And it should be more than just this. Now, you know, one of the things, it's gonna be an outlier too. We do a formative assessment. You know, a teacher, a teacher listens to a child read. They watch a child, they evaluate a child's writing samples. And so if I were a teacher and, and they, I have a child who, remember last year, because this is children were in my class last year. And I show that Johnny, it looks like from his assessment that Johnny, you know, can't do grammar. But as a teacher, I'm saying, it looks completely different. So it may be Johnny had a bad day that day. It may be that his parents knew he had some grammar problems because last year's teacher told him and they got him into reading halfway with the summer. So you gotta look at holistic approach. But the short answer is yes, that's the instructional piece that makes this work. That's why we need math coaches.
Exactly.
Because our reading coaches are doing their work. We got, we gotta get math coaches to help do that for math too.
What I just, just shared is a sample packet for the parent. And I flipped over to the second page, which shows a student's profile. And this is just a sample of one. And it gets down into what that parent will be able to see to know exactly what is going on with that particular student.
So in the case of what you just talked about, Dr. McCardo, when you look at the reading, reporting categories for, for an example for reading, it's key ideas and details and craft and structure. Notice that the stars at the bottom kinda tell the parent whether they're on track or not or if they're prepared. So it's broken out by those areas. So they know specifically that I may be fine in reading, however the language I have issue.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
This goes on with standard space. More parts too, doesn't it?
Will your report next time include providing support for teachers and LEAs as it relates to the results of the data? I know we're talking about making sure to support the students. But I'm thinking about when we get the data back and we see that LEAG has a trend that identifies that this is an issue. Will your report include how the state will support the students to report? It will include that?
We have an interactive reporting with DRC. It's a dashboard that they, that's what they're reviewing now as well as their data. It drills down to just about anything they want to drill down to. And it specifically looks at those particular students and what the weaknesses are for those students. But also it can, when you start looking at that, you can know that you had these particular students for last year. So were, were there any strengths or weaknesses I need to, to really shore up or look at? So yes, they have that at their fingertips. It's a dashboard. And over the next month, we're gonna be rolling out some additional training on that reporting. We've already started that. We started about six months ago, but we're continuously, and it is a work in progress because DRC is continuing to build reports on it as we talk to them about points that are needed. Because there are summary reports. There are, like you saw here, they can get even granular if they want to. As you were speaking, the students that were in a particular, like, group that scored lower on one particular, then they can pull those as well.
I would imagine those local school boards would love the opportunity to see their data in a simplified dashboard format. Also, since really their local control, if they can see that, will there be some sort of report that's appropriate for their, you know, that's, that's not necessarily as deep in the weeds as maybe a building level principal might get.
Definitely, definitely. And also, going back to Dr. McCardo, there was questions, you had a question talking about the support that will be available for those students. I just want to make certain that we are aware that Maggie, with her team of Dr. Davis, they have worked together to create some instructional supports that are aligned to both the course of study as well as A-CAP. And that's part of our final, part of this presentation to talk about the instructional supports that we're putting together. And it's not just a stop there. We're continuing to build those supports, responding to the data. So, and that's what our goal is, to respond to the data, to make sure we're getting the schools and the district what they need in order to be successful. And there is a strong partnership. Actually, Dr. Davis has actually been involved. She's over in the corner. She's been involved in the DRC meetings with Maggie to make certain, instructionally, the supports that we need are actually in place and actually helping to design some of those to meet the needs of her team that's going out to provide the support.
Is this how we would tie into the comprehensive school support, determining those schools that will get support?
Yes, well, for the school improvement, when we look at our accountability system, when you start looking at those schools, yes. Once we get back on track after COVID disappears and we're able to go back to identifying schools, all of this is calculated and rolled into the differentiation of schools from our actual federal report card to determine which schools will get that intensified support from Melissa's team.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And also, Dr. Rich, I'm sorry, Dr. McCardo.
It is very, a good report. One comment I meant before I asked the question is when you were talking about the ranges. If you look at, I'm looking at the Language Arts Sample Student C that has a 595 score, not only is that a new, a number, but it also shows where it falls on that scale. So if you are a Level 3 and you had a 502, it would show that you are not as proficient as you would, might wanna be. And so I think that's a great presentation. It transfers numbers into a, or an original presentation. Or something. Anyway, the question I would like to ask, and this is, where we project forward, you know, we're under some legislative mandates about third grades in certain skill levels, reading and Language Arts. Are you beginning, is any of this data helping us to understand? And the governor did veto a bill passed by the Alabama Legislature, which would have instituted the requirement of retention of third graders sooner. But are you beginning to gather data to help advise us and the governor and the legislature on what we project forward, on how impactful the retention of third graders would be based on where our data points are beginning to develop?
We are beginning to collect data.
What does this show? What is, if, you know, our second graders are not gonna be third graders? They're not gonna be the population involved, the second graders. They're gonna be, they're this year's third graders.
This year's third graders.
The ones that are listed here as second graders are this year's third graders.
Yes, yes. And what we're doing is, with this meeting, we're just doing overall, A-CAP being that it was ELA. And we're starting to gather that data so that we can have those conversations within our October meeting. And we're gonna actually have the statisticians there and hopefully be able to drill down and look at those reading standards from there. But right now, we're just upper level of what we're doing for our federal accountability system, the overall summative aspect. But yes, we are collecting that data and we will have that presentation ready with conversations from our tech team and Dr. Mackey for our October work session.
And so the data we're collecting will allow us to project some impact of the laws on our students as the legislature continues to decide what we ought to do as educators. And the governor is in a different position as the chairman of this board and, and acting chief, as we all know, vetoed the bill. So I'm sure they're gathering data on what to do with the same thing again. And I'm asking, how much are we, data collection are we gathering? It will help us project the impact of the decision that they made?
We are gathering data. We are gathering, and we are going to drill down further into those standards that are just reading. And then allow, as Dr. Mackey indicated earlier, DRC is working to build that third grade reading assessment. So we're looking and we're gonna see how these things align. And this data will be a piece of what we have to present for next month.
And I hope as you gather that data, you can share it with the board. And I'm sort of in the governor's office because whether it should be or not, it's a significant political issue.
Yes, sir.
Definitely.
I have one more quick question. Because we've been really talking with our in-service centers, for them to get this information and to know our weakened areas, for them to provide the professional development, it would be great when the, those in-service centers could also get the information needed. So they can project on what, you know, do we need to be putting more in the area of reading? Or do we need to be putting more in the area of math? And then from what I'm hearing from these in-service centers, it's our middle schools and high schools that are really in need of support and intervention and such, which I know is nothing new to y'all. But we have to stop going, looking backwards. You have to look backwards and make sure we don't repeat our errors. But we need to be moving forward, finding out what is the problem, addressing the problem, and how are we gonna fix it?
Definitely, definitely.
And in line with that, I was gonna say, the in-service centers that Ms. McRay and Dr. Perry, Dr., excuse me, Tom, my Tony period, that's what I'm thinking about. Dr. Chestnut and I discussed, mentioned instructional coaches for middle school and high school, not just making it specific for math or reading, someone who could help in all those content areas. So I just wanted to say that in line with Coach, you're saying the sigler.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We're answering our questions. You're not done yet.
Some of the questions that were actually presented, that's some of our instructional strategies toward the back. So it really, it's lining up. It's just beginning to be a conversation. And it shows what we're already doing and how we're building that structure of support to really lay on top of the data.
Can you send an electronic copy of this?
Yes, yes.
Definitely. We'll get it to Ms. Nor and we'll get it to all board members.
Thank you.
Is there a sample teacher report as well?
I do not, we do not have a sample teacher.
All of that will live in the interactive dashboard. So what we can try to do is get some screenshots to show you what they will have access to. Because the whole purpose of an interactive dashboard is to, is for a teacher, A, to be able to go in there and define the reports to what they actually need toward their instruction. Because what I might need to be beneficial, but what we're, work with them to do is to get screenshots of what they see and how they can tailor those reports to meet their needs.
That will be great.
Okay.
And can we link? I think that DRC said that they would release 25% of the questions after the test was given. The questions that they release to the public, will the teachers, like, let's say again, grammar was the weak area. Then they get those 25% of the questions. The teachers can go back through and say, oh, they worded this in such a way that I've never presented it in this manner to my students. They know the concept, they know it, but they've never seen it presented that way before. And then they could perhaps tailor the way they ask questions if, if some of those questions could have been confusing for their students. Maybe their students knew the answer, but they had never seen it presented that way. Know what I mean?
And doing those particular items right now are housed within our item specifications. That was, that's what Ms. Martin was talking about. One of the pieces of documents or the instructional pieces that we have for them is in the specifications that they have access to, to where it does place those. Yeah, it does place those. And if you need to see those, we can get a copy of those.
Well, and we'll, again, to sort of copy or move on to something that you brought up with the in-service centers, would they have access to that?
Yes.
So that they can also, in their professional development, provide that?
And one good thing about that is, Dr. Davis is doing great work with the in-service centers. So, and I know she, her pen is probably going crazy over there now recording things and she has meetings with them. So we can coordinate this support to make certain we're meeting the needs of the in-service centers and make certain that the professional development that they are offering our educators, it actually aligns to the needs within those districts. And that's what the key is. Once we are able to get that district level data, we can do a, some sort of a heat map and kind of look at what the trends are for those areas and make certain that we share that with the in-service center so they know what's needed over here. An in-service center 1 is not needed, an in-service center 2, that we can kind of tailor it to what is needed within that population of students.
That's right. But you gather the, the class sample guide, would you also include the school? That usually with assessments, it's gonna show you, you know, those documents that they use for professional development of the teachers. Can you include that?
We'll include all of the resources as many that we can pull out of there. And that, a lot of that is being replaced with that dashboard. So we can go on there and define what we need to get out of there.
Thank you.
I will say, in the conversations with the in-service centers, a question I have for every director, which they don't like necessarily to answer, is, are there districts that don't contact you at all for professional development? And who are they? And do you know why they aren't? Have you built that relationship? So all of this will be for not, if we're putting the tools in the hands of the in-service center and the district isn't desiring that particular professional development. So I'm not really sure what the answer is there. But it, it makes no sense to, to do all of that work and not have everyone participating when they have this opportunity. So it, it is a concern that I have. Because I do think there are, there are districts not reaching out for that, to the in-service centers for assistance. And maybe it's because they haven't offered them quality, a quality professional development. I don't know.
Based on their needs. So we could, we could have those conversations and sometimes you can call those in-service center directors separately and get conversations going about districts that are not. And then have those conversations with our curriculum people within the district to see why are they not communicating with them? And we can work to close those gaps.
Right. I mean, I'm just doing some general math here and I'm thinking to myself, if I'm looking at my data and I'm a local and I'm verifying that 84% of my seventh graders are at Level 1 and 2, I would be freaking out. Just to be very honest with you. So we've got to get very serious.
And I think the key about which you were speaking is communication, communication, communication. And sometimes it is just picking up that phone call and saying, what is it that's holding you back? Why are you not taking advantage? What is it that we can do to help you?
And then work if the department increases the communication, making certain that the quality, you know? Sometimes locals will think, and when I was a local, that we know what we need based on the reports and I can go in and define and develop what I need. But why recreate the wheel when we have quality professional development with experts sitting out there? But while we create the will where we have quality professional development with experts sitting out there, um, able to deliver that. So that's where we would do that communicate, communication, letting them know that we support, we endorse this professional development. And it's going to, um, we're going to see some improvement. Because this past summer, Sandy, as well as, she waved at me over there. Um, they worked in order to do great professional development. They worked with Dr. Davis in order to, um, look at our new courses of study and produce high quali, uh, high quality professional development that we're not seeing the results of right here, uh, because that was just done this summer. So we're, we're looking to see improvement based off the actions that we have, the intensive summer learning that occurred. But we're going to build off of that. This is just that baseline. This is that starting point. This is our baseline data. We know where the students were even with COVID. So now our job is to take this and let's move this forward with the needed instruction. And hopefully in-person instruction in order to get the kids where they need to be.
Right. And I'm not, please understand, this is not about finger pointing or blaming. I am not doing that. I am saying, this is a very serious.
And these are our students. These are our, when we gave state level data, this is our data. When we're asking the districts to verify their data, all of their student data rolls up to the state and it becomes our data at that point. So we need to make certain that we're putting best practices in place to support all the students that are identified in these numbers. And that's what our goal is. That's what we're working to do is to improve the instructional opportunity for all the students that are identified here.
And one suggestion, I think we used to emphasize this, and I know that sometimes it's, especially when we meet in person, sometimes it's, it's, um, it can be more difficult, you don't have enough seats. But in the past, if, like, we identify by region, you know the in-service centers, and I think we're going to talk about this a little bit, but the budgets are pretty, pretty meager. And so, um, as they stand right now. And so let's say that one in-service center, they show that their district, I would say District One, um, but say District One says, oh, my goodness, you know, our students, they really, we need to emphasize, um, math in third and fourth grade. So we're really going to go after math, science, social studies, or whatever it is that they target a certain area. But then you've got some schools in their district that they're like, oh, that's, we don't have that problem. We did fine on that. We were really weak in another area. And in-service center number two, District Two, is doing a bang-up job and offering those. It used to be that the boundaries were rigid. And if you weren't trying, if you were a school in that one district, you could not go to get professional development at an in-service center out of district. And we have in the past sometimes waved that and said, look, if there are seats available in another in-service center district, even though your school is not physically located in that district, you may go there with our blessing. And I would suggest that, to me, that's just more efficient and more effective. If they don't need what their district is offering, because they're rock solid on it, no sense in their, you know, teachers wasting their time and they've already got it down. But this other in-service center is offering something that it would be extremely helpful to them and they have seats available. I don't know why we wouldn't promote that.
Definitely.
You know, and so, and encourage that. And I don't, our Troy people are back there. But I would say, you know, if you had, um, if you have, um, seats available, I would think you would welcome people from Auburn and from Tuscaloosa and from all over the state.
They can't, I thought they could. They can't?
Well, based on our communication with them, I think they do come together and collaborate.
That's what we were.
Yeah, I mentioned how they were collaborating together. So I think they may be a step of, they're right on point with you.
I've seen some of that. But then I've also been told that they are not, they are not allowed to market what, you know, school system, right. If, if, let's say I've got, there's one, um, in, um, another district that is, is, um, they have to contact, they have to make the initiating call. They have to call the other district and say, hey, what are you offering this summer? That they can't share with them what was, it was thought to be marketing. And it's like, you're trying to steal our teaching, you know, but you know, so.
Work on a communication strategy of how we're, um, sharing with districts and in their meetings. And that will be a prime time when we're bringing the in-service directors together. For their meetings, that's that prime time to share their offering and what their needs are, uh, without saying you're marketing anything. So there, there's a way we can work through that if that is actually occurring. We can actually work through that. That's not a problem. And it's just once we have those meetings and we do our surveys to show what the needs are within the districts, we can share that information with them. That is not a problem. It's all about communication.
The in-service directors do share with each other their curriculum so that they can. And the idea of whatever you call recruiting within the in-service center directors publish what some of the others are doing, I think already, at least in my area, I know they do because they want the teachers to get the maximum opportunity.
Exactly.
If they're willing to travel and sacrifice their own pride. I think that's already being done.
In some areas.
Some, some areas.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. I mean, I, I love what they did. And so I hate it when you walk in and there's empty seats and there's other people that couldn't have benefited.
My question?
Move on.
Okay. And then, uh, we, we briefly looked at the math. Uh, we've already had comments about the math. So if we look at the science as well on the next page, again, this is a summative assessment. And remember that we administered the science in grades four, six, and eight for the summative.
So there is a, we're, we're required under federal law to administer science twice. We elected to do it, uh, really four times. So we do three A-CAP and then science on the ACT. So we get four science measures. We do them basically every other year. Um, and, and science is our bright spot, by the way. Our students really did well. I, as an old science teacher, I was actually really pleased to see that our students in the science questions, a lot of it's about reasoning, the reasoning kinds of questions. And so I was glad to see that, um, you know, so many of our students were not below grade level on scientific reasoning. That's a bright spot. We need, we need some things to celebrate too. So we had too many in Level Two. Uh, but again, as they dig deeper in those, you know, some of those Level Twos, and I haven't seen where they fall in Level Two. It's not time yet. But hopefully some of them are closer to the high end. And so again, you can identify areas and help move them, move them up. But, um, but I will be honest, I'm a little shocked. And I don't mean that, I mean that nicely. But you know, I know one thing last year for sure in just talking to people. Our teachers, when students were remote, they were in and out, you know, sometimes they were hybrid. So I saw my students two days a week, but the other two days a week, they were remote. We know they focused, focused, focused on reading. To, to, in my opinion, to somewhat to the detriment of math. And it's to echo what Ms. West said. I'm not pointing any fingers, not casting any stones. It was a difficult year. And I appreciate that our teachers knew, reading is fundamental. We have to focus on reading. But it tells me they also focused on some reasoning skills because that's really what the science measures is, reasoning skills. And so they were doing more than just basic education. They were helping our students think deeply, um, too. And of course, we get to district data, we'll be able to, to dig deeper into those.
Dr. Mackey, I'm glad you recognized the improvement in science as a, as a former science teacher. And it is rather striking to look at the grade levels parallel and see the difference and the significant difference in higher scores in science than in math. And I guess we attribute that some to the STEM emphasis that we do. And, uh, do you all have any other comments about the difference? It's striking, dramatic, the difference in this grade levels between, uh, Level Three and Four. It's what I concentrate on. You know, I think Level Two is a D, but that's, Dr. Mackey and I agree to disagree. But the Bs and the Cs, the Bs and As are Level Three and Four. And to look at Grade Ten, for example, uh, excuse me, uh, you know, you have 7% in Level Three and Four in math and 48% in Level Three and Four in science. What a dramatic difference. Y'all? Am I reading right, Ms. Eric?
So, my interpretation of that, exactly as yours, is that when we, the, the testing of science is more about reasoning than it is math. Now, we know in practical application, you know, you've got to know, you have to know math to do physics, obviously. But in science, as in the ACT, science portion, it's a lot about reading passages and making inferences and, and scientific reasoning rather than working problems out. And so I think that's what you're seeing is that reading carries over to science more than math carries over to science in the assessment.
And also, Dr. Mackey, I think the comparison that he was just giving us is taking the next three, um, areas, grouping them together. That's the alternate science. Uh, when you look at tho, those numbers, that's for the alternate science as opposed to your, um, basic science. Yes, definitely.
One more question about math. Is it, is it, am I, do I understand correctly, we, the new course of study for math will begin this fall? And so a lot of our schools have new textbooks this fall in math. And so are many of the questions, the content areas covered on A-CAP going to change? Uh, uh, you know, so that we can, you know what I mean? It's like, it's, it's, um, we have this test, they've taken it once, then we have a new course of study, new textbooks. I guess it, can you help me understand what the impact might be?
Definitely. Uh, Meg and I just finished that conversation surrounding the standards from 2016, 2019, standards for math. And I'm going to let her go ahead. And that, that's, we just finished that conversation.
And that is a conversation that we've had quite a bit and we're going to put out something to our district so that they'll have it down. Because they are sometimes not confused, but concerned because, um, someone made a comment, how can we score our students on ELA standards? Because they're thinking that they're already in the process of ELA with the new standards, but that's not the case. We start billing the test way prior to that. So once we get the, get the course of study approved, then we start field testing. So each test has field test items on there. So for this, this past year, for 21, what we're looking at is data that had items on there that were duly aligned to our 2016 and 2019. That means that each item, again, as Chetia has already stated, is vetted by teachers in our state. And it's also, they have to look at, they have to look at the item, they have to look at the course of study to make sure that they're in alignment. So each item that was on the test for 21 had to align with the 26 and 20, uh, the 16 and 19. And remember, there wasn't a lot of changes that took place with the math, so we were able to do that. Now, when we get ready to do the ELA, it's going to be a little bit different because we're having to look at different standards and also different items.
And so we will communicate, we will work with LEAs, we will talk them through all that and have them to prepare.
Definitely.
And so for the 22 math test, it will be fully aligned with 2019 standards.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And as she explained, she and I just spoke about this, we're getting communication out to LEAs so that when they're interpreting the data and they're actually having communication with their stakeholders, they're able to communicate this to them so that there's an understanding.
Okay. And then the last, um, three shots, as, as Ms. Martin's already stated, of course, is our, um, alternate assessment, uh, which wasn't new this year as well. Uh, we were able to field test the, those, um, that test last year. We got that in before we started shutting down. So we were able to get that completed. And so this is our first year also, uh, with our alternate assessment.
Those, just alternate assessment, remember those are for the very low functioning, cognitively low functioning students are most severely disabled.
And did you find that there, the numbers, because of their exceptionality, were probably less so? Meaning they probably weren't coming back in for face-to-face and as much because of, so I guess my question is, do you see that their numbers dropped as far as the number of tested? Or do you feel good that you've got an accurate?
We feel we got an accurate, um, depiction of the population.
Okay.
And as a reminder, this is that 1%. This is the, um, we start thinking that we should only have at a minimum 1% of our tested population in this particular category. So that number is relatively small anyway.
Right. But I was just thinking with their exceptionality, sometimes it's more medical, physicalities, medically fragile.
Yes.
Okay. So good, a good.
Good indicator.
A very good indicator. Yes. Thank you.
The next two pages, um, um, indicate the information that we're pulling together. And this is not considered just a comprehensive list. This is our starting point. Uh, we have our baseline data. And now we're actually in recovery and coming up with our instructional next steps. What we've gone back and done, we've looked at our federal funds, S1, 2, and 3. And we've looked at the professional development that we offer this summer, this summer. And a lot of the changes that we're going through right now is for as, um, Dr. Davis's instructional team redesigned with Amstite, ARI. And we just did a, a list of, the first thing we want to do is, as best as we can following COVID, COVID protocols, we want to make sure we promote in-person instruction. Because we're looking at, um, the needs responding to the data, saying what do our students need? And so that's our first item. And then we, uh, Dr. Davis and her team have worked with Maggie to create those instructional support documents and resources that I explained that are aligned to the course of study as well as, um, the A-CAP, um, targeted professional development opportunities. And that's what you were going toward. So we were saying that we expanded it. And after looking at data and hearing from our field, um, Dr. Davis took her work and went back and actually put the word targeted. Because we want to make certain when we're doing this, that we're looking at these profile sheets and at the professional development that we're actually offering is for those areas, not just saying we need math professional development or science professional development. What in that area do we need to promote within those areas? So that's when you're seeing targeted in your communication, that's what it's going with. And from there, uh, they've also provided those critical standards to the LEAs to make certain they know what is first and foremost. Um, targeted remediation that was shown this summer, extended learning, summer learning opportunities. And then we cannot forget enrichment opportunities. A lot of times we have a tendency to forget that piece in our instructional delivery. MTSS rollout is occurring. That's that multi-tier system of support. And we have a great person that's leading that work and organizing it throughout the department and then rolling it out to the districts as well. Uh, we have expanded our partnerships. Um, R7CC, CCSSO is just great with us. A+ is awesome. Um, Rail Southeast, NCSI, uh, one, our tech person is actually, um, hired with NCIEA. So when we say we have experts sitting at the table helping to guide and interpret our data, we do. We're sharing and we're scheduling those meetings with them. Uh, we've expanded our access course development down to grade six because we know as our students are transitioning, um, due to COVID, we want to make certain that quality instruction can still be afforded to them. And one way is through access. So we've moved it to six through 12. Um, our teacher in residence program, what we're doing now, we're taking data as the districts are verifying it. And we want to lay it on top of that. Because one thing we need to do is evaluate what we're doing. So we want to make certain that it's actually working. And if it's not, we need to make certain that we're giving it the support it needs so that we can have productive data, um, for that. We've aligned our standards to the main framework as our little students said earlier. So we're making certain thi, this is actually occurring. Because what we don't want our teachers to do is to say, I'm having to teach this over here, this over here, and this over there. We want it all together so that there's a seamless approach to teaching and learning. Uh, we've also expanded our state and regional ELs, uh, supports. We have an EL administrator. So we know that pop, that population has really grown across the state. So we're making certain that we're very intentional and we're paying attention to the needs of our districts. Because those are our students. They roll up to the state. And also we're, um, Sandy has done an awesome job of assisting the LEAs with that. of assisting the LEAs with that targeted AMSTAD training. And it's only going to increase because, just as you all are just seeing this, the team members are just seeing this data as well. Because the districts are still verifying it. So, I know she's sitting over there writing bullets and wanting to call all of her LEAs, what can I do? How can I help? What can we do to improve? But they will have access to this data to also drill down in it to help guide what they're doing to support our districts and schools. And it's going to continue. This is not just a comprehensive list, it's going to continue. There's, we can skip the other leg.
You want to do the ACT?
Yeah, ACT, there's a few nights, a few nights, if y'all want to do that.
Okay, we can do those one quick. This, go ahead.
You all asked, I'm sorry.
No, I said, so we can just complete everything you all have.
All right, great. Okay, so you all asked about, because you brought concern that what you were hearing from your constituents about what they wanted within their district. So, we did a survey and you see the tallies there. So, we're, we asked, and we gave them four choices. The last choice is, of course, what they're doing now. I did put, of course, worksheets on there. But you can see that the first choice, thirty-two percent, and then the third, the fourth choice, of course, tenth grade ACT and a love grade ACT. So, those are your choices and the responses from, from the districts. And again, this went out to superintendents, to system test coordinators, advisory team, and then there was another group that we, can I remember that group? Principals.
It was a large group, to only have two hundred and eighty-six individuals responding. It went out to a very large group. So, I don't want us to just look at that and just make our final. But that is the piece that we sent out. And we'll still, we can, we're going to still work and collect additional data. Because we understand.
Thank you so much for doing this.
Yes, but we do understand that they've had a lot going on. And they're in and out of their buildings, they're, I mean, there's just a lot. So, the completion of a survey may not be just their first part. And we do understand that.
Again, Dr. Mackey, as you saw from the video, that was part of our campaign that we started for this year. We wanted to get students involved and to prepare those students. So, again, grades four and eight, all districts have been notified. We do have approximately one hundred and eighty-nine schools that have been notified as well if they have been randomly selected participating. And the testing window does start in January. All testing will be administered on digital devices attached to the path. The NAEP can bring their own personnel in. And of course, they're going to abide by the CDC and district health guidelines because we instructed them that even though we have CDC guidelines, there may be some stricter guidelines within those particular districts. And so they have to reach out to find out those. Of course, as you heard from the two children, no individual scores for students or districts. We, and then, of course, we still have a long trend, a long-term trend study for nine-year-olds in math and reading. And eleven schools will participate. Out of that one hundred and eighty-nine, eleven of those will participate in that long trend study. Oh, excuse me. And then, of course, we have posters. And at the end of the presentation, I was going to bring one and I actually forgot to bring it, to show you the posters that we are delivering. We've delivered, yeah, I can do that, the next one, yeah. That's a sample of the posters. Our NAEP coordinator got us all that we wanted to do a placemat. When we first started doing this, we were going to do a placemat that had the NAEP framework on one side and then the course of study on the other side. Well, when he was working with Charles Creel, who cares for the department, they started seeing that it was great information, but it was too small for just a placemat. So, now it's a poster that we've already had printed and have already started delivering. And within the next two weeks, we'll have all of those delivered to especially the participating districts. And Dr. Mackey wanted us to make sure that we got every school one of those.
That's wonderful.
Okay, and then, of course, we have a brochure. I do have a sample, if you wanted to see that. A brochure that we created, again, for parents to explain what NAEP is about in accordance with the test. And we'll get those out to the districts and to those schools to give out to the parents, to the parents just before the test starts in January. We have retired NAEP items that have been placed within the Scantron platform. We've already started the professional development on that. We have recordings to get out to the districts about how to use that question bank. And some have already, some tests have already been built within that platform for them to use. We've already talked about the public service announcement. And then, of course, we wanted to utilize the Teacher of the Year to assist by promoting NAEP events. And then, we are going to do some ad chats, as Dr. Mackey had already stated, about putting that out on Twitter. Of course, we said we were going to start Monday, August the thirtieth, but that was delayed. So, we haven't said, I think we're going to start it in October.
We're reviewing and just don't want to overburden our educators because they have so much going on in the field. And so if there are other ways we can get the information to them, we're going to work that way to get them in. Just pause that for right now.
So, that one wasn't done.
Right. Okay, and these are just the samples again of the actual posters that we're giving to them.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, that was a great idea you came up with.
Yes.
And that's the brochure that we're going to get published to get to our school of course. Okay, we do have three schools that will be participating in October in what's called our Pearl's exam that's associated. This is the NAEP International Assessment. So, they have been notified and that's on track still for October to be tested.
And I want to take this time to say that Maggie and her team, they do a phenomenal job with our testing to make certain that we're meeting all of our federal guidelines, to make sure that our funding does not have conditions placed on it. So, I just want to let you guys know that lead work that goes behind this is Maggie and her team. Only one is present, but it's a wonderful team to work with and get the job done.
Thank you.
And Maggie, would you be sure to tell your entire team that we are very grateful and we are appreciative of all their hard work.
Yes, I am, sure. Thank you.
They appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you all so much. Y'all want to keep going, I'm ready to break.
Three twenty-seven.
Well, you know, my stomach's always problem.
All right.
The next one's, Eric Mackey.
Yeah, the next one's myself and Mr. Craig. And that's going through the budget. So, I would say that probably takes some time. We want to break and come back. And I think that all of our outside folks who need to speak have been done. So, they, so nobody else would have to, you know.
So, if we go before lunch, will you go quicker because you're hungry?
No, it's going to take a while.
I'm going to the same, same presentation either way.
Okay, well, we're reconvening at one fifteen, forty-eight minutes. All right, one fifteen, thank you.
Thank you.
We convene for our work session, you want to go on with the foundation program?
Yes, I sure will.
All right, FY 2023 foundation program appropriation request. All right, B be on our agenda.
I see that fewer people are interested in this. So Charles is going to pull it up and we're going to go through the foundation program requests. Now this will not be a complete, let's go on to that next slide. This won't be a complete surprise because we obviously discussed this in great detail going through it line by line, which helped me a lot, heard from some of you, y'all like that with the, thank you sir. At the retreat, but we've taken your input, we've taken information we got from the districts, some, and we've got stuff from our department, so like our AMSTI staff and our ARI staff and what they say they need. And we've tried to put all that together. I just remind you, these first two slides, I know you've seen them, but we've done two things. So, and I'm actually going to let you tell me which way you'd really go through it. So I have the line items, like we looked at it through the tree and we can go, we'll go through that. That might be easiest, but I also want you to see how we took those requests and lined them up to our strategic plan. And to me, when I present it to the legislature, that's important, that they see that these requests are aligned to the strategic plan. So every child, every chance, every day, those three fundamental questions, will it help our students become better readers? Will it help our students be better prepared to success in algebra? Will it help our students become more productive, responsible citizens when they graduate and enter the workforce? You know, and some of you've been and heard me speak to chambers or others, always start with this same slide. And I won't go into detail with that. Our strategic plan, not our pyramid, same thing. So we took these budget out, and some of them obviously overlap in two. So it's professional development, highly effective educators, but it's also aimed at academic growth. But we, you'll see that we aligned the budget through the strategic plan. Academic growth and achievement, college career ready workforce, safe and supportive learning environments, highly effective educators and customer friendly services. So I don't want to go through it twice. What I'm going to propose is let me just show you how it lines up and then let's get to the spreadsheet. We can always come back to this. But again, for the purpose of the legislature and the public, we want them to see that these are investments that are targeted purely at academic growth and achievement for our students. These are, so I'll get into detail in a minute, these are college, career and workforce readiness. Okay, they're purely targeted toward those initiatives. Okay, the next one, these are purely targeted towards safe and supportive learning environment. And then highly effective educators. Again, this one, there's definitely overlap because highly effective educators also lead to all those other things. And then our customer friendly services, just things that are, that are, they're about making it easier on parents, making it easier on districts, making it easier on teachers.
One question on the environment side, the special education stipend, what is that?
Go back. So what you'll see is we have proposed, one of the things that y'all asked about was could we pay special ed teachers more? So we have figured in, I think it is $5,000 is where we settled per special ed teacher. That would be a pure, for K-12, be a pure stipend to just basically, you know, up their salary. And I realize that's $68 million, probably a big jump to try to get all that in one year, but we may. And if we don't ask, and you know.
So this is each year? This already is a one time?
Well, we're proposing each year, that that would be a permanent increase.
I just want to make sure I understand that.
Yeah, be a permanent increase, that special needs teachers would just get, they would just pay about the same essentially as what we pay NBCT teachers. Especially, again, you could stack them like the teens thing. So if I'm a special ed teacher and NBCT, then I can get two. If I'm in a high need school, I could get three. But that's our proposal, is it would be like NBCT, it would be a permanent stipend.
Okay, good. And that's a critical need area too, along with math and science.
Are we doing anything for health nurses or school nurses or anything in a increased budget? I know we should do that through the ESA programming.
Yes, sir. So we're, so what we've put in here.
I was just trying to see where it fell.
Yeah, if I go back, go back. Here, we've put in for school nurses an additional $60 million. Now, what that would be is enough money to pay for, to fully pay for school nurses that are in place, to make sure that there's one in every school. Because right now, the local districts are picking up about a third of the cost of school nurses.
And they're all having theirs.
Right. And so what this would do is if you take that, you know, if I'm paying now the local, if I'm paying $250,000 to supplement what the state and feds already give me for school nurses, and we come in and say, we're going to pay that $250,000, then local districts can take the $250,000 they're spending. They can wash up the salary matrix for nurses if they want to, they can hire additionals. They could, you know, they could figure out how they want to spend that money because essentially we're relieving them that burden. Another thing we've been asked by the School Nurses Association is to look at the salary matrix for LPNs. So the salary matrix for registered nurses, there's, it is tied to the daily rate for teachers. Essentially, it's very close. So the teachers and nurses have the same daily rate. It does not end up being the same annual salary because under the foundation program, nurses are paid to work 182 days and teachers 187 days. And so because nurses are paid for five fewer days, even if it's on the same daily rate they made last month. So one of the things we would, if we got the $60 million, that we would suggest is to increase nurses to 187 days. Now, I get that complaint every year from superintendents that their nurses have, you know, they, like, they're starting school and the teachers have been there for four days of PD before the nurse shows up. And that they need their nurses and all that professional development hearing the same things the teachers are hearing. Plus, they need those days to get student records ready and all that. So part of this would be increasing nurses by five days, registered nurses, and then otherwise supplementing what the districts are spending. The other thing though, is LPNs. So what we're hearing from the nursing community is that it's really not as big a problem for RNs as it is LPNs, that we, there's a, there's a more profound shortage of LPNs, licensed practical nurses than there is RNs. And that when the state went to a salary matrix, they made the LPN salary somewhat equivalent to what teachers aides make. Whereas RNs were tied to teacher salaries, LPNs were tied to teacher aides. But that LPNs make so much in hospitals that it's not even equivalent. So I think our LPN starting salary is around $22,000 and they say you just can't, it's just not possible. The only way they get them is if they want, like to be working at the school where their children go or something.
Good insurance.
Good insurance, good benefits, and they get summers, you know, we get summers off, we know those things. But so part of this would be also plus up those LPN, the LPN salary matrix.
So we, since we're looking at increases in that, right now, as I understand it, school systems can use ESA money, particularly for this healthcare issue of nurses. Am I correct in what I've understood? At least that's what advised my constitution because of what I understood. That because of COVID's association with medical care, that school systems who have not been able to hire or recruit or hire nurses or have not hired nurses for all schools could in fact use some of their ESA money to provide that care now, which may provide us data if they hire nurses using ESA money to justify our state appropriations to replace when the ESA money is not spent.
Absolutely.
That's the rationale that I'm looking at.
They can use ESA money.
So if they'll staff out with ESA money, it will help us to validate the requests for the numbers of nurses to do the same thing.
Right.
Is the legislators looking at increasing salary for the teachers? Are they looking at 1% or 2% this year or have you heard?
I don't know a percentage. I definitely think they're looking at salary increase, yes. And I think, you know, it might even be more significant than that, but.
I hope so.
I haven't seen a number yet. That's something we can talk about. Of course, that always comes off the top, but.
They need something.
Yeah, the amount of money that we think will be available, assuming continued economic growth is phenomenal. I mean, it's, so the growth this year is probably going to be in the, around 16% year over year growth in the Education Trust Fund. And that won't be final until the end of September, but we're pretty close. It would take a, more than a catastrophic crash in the next two weeks for us not to finish the year with about 16%.
Well, I was at a meeting with Senator Albritton and he was talking about the abundance of money that we have and how well the economy is going. So they're aware that there's money to be.
Yes, there's news article today about doing tax cuts, so we need to be with money. We know there are plenty of needs out there. Mr. Craig's here now, so when I get lost, I feel it. You can come on up if you want to, or you can stay right there until we get, come over here, sit beside me or whatever you want to do. Stay over there and we'll go over both ends.
All right.
So what I'd like to do now is go down a couple of slides and actually get to the spreadsheet and go through it that way. Oh, I don't have that on here. You've got it in your notebook. So I'm going to link this up.
Does Delinda have it?
She does, I think. Does she have the spreadsheet?
I do have it. Thank you, I do.
So I'm just going to, I'm going to go through it pretty quickly, you know, it's about eight pages. But now you stop me wherever you want to. So, so the first two line items, we, you see lunch, access distance learning, same amount we had in there two weeks ago, to $3.5 million. That is to increase course offerings down to the middle school. Remind you, I talked about how we were having to take Florida Virtual School now sold to a private company. So we're having to build our own courses and we're largely paying for that, the build out out of federal funds. But we'll have to manage it then going forward out of state funds. So asking for three and a half million there, that came from internal, our access people say that's what they'll need. Advanced placement, the $2 million increase to support, again, the expansion of those programs. The math, science, technology initiative, so we've asked for, there are three line items here actually. So $3 million, you see the bullet points over there, what we pay for. It is the, part of us to cover raises, to be honest with you. We've had three sets of raises and level funding in AMSTI, so we've actually had to start cutting positions to make the raises. But measuring the impact of the TIR program, just building out capacity and supporting districts. The second one, teachers in residence, not asking free money because we're paying for that out of federal funds. But based on looking at our math needs, I would recommend that we put back in our request for, for level one schools, math coaches again. That's eight and a half million dollars. Now remember, this was the first step in a six-year process to get math coaches in every K-5 school. We asked for it three years ago and didn't get it. And last year, we put it on the back burner and said we would not ask for it because we, we got the money instead for the TIR program, the pilot program. And we're going to run the pilot for three years on our federal money. But my fear is if we wait three years and then start asking for math coaches for our lowest performing schools, we're years down the road getting the assistance to those schools. And in a year when there is phenomenal growth, why not go ahead and ask for those math coaches? Essentially, they would pair up with where we've got reading coaches in the lowest performing 53 schools. That's 53 schools. They may not be exactly the same because the lowest in reading might not be the lowest in math you see. But I can tell you, y'all, you're not surprised that many of them are going to be the same. So putting our resources where the need is the greatest, and that would be eight and a half million. That would put a math coach, a building based math coach in each school that was between 20 and 46% proficient on the 2019 scan term. Now, we might, you know, if we get the money, we'll probably look at this more recent data. But that's how we came up with the number. We looked at that, one of the schools that are in that proficiency bands and what we caused to put a coach in each one of those schools.
So Dr. Mackey goes, districts that might have K-2, 3, 5 schools, would they share a math person?
Our proposal is they would get two.
In that scenario, each building would get two?
Each building would get one?
I'm sorry, each building would get one, the pair of schools would get two?
Right. So every school that was in that bottom percentage would get, if it had any part of grades K-3, 5, would get its own dedicated math coach.
And Dr. Mackey, I understand AMSTI, and I don't see Sandy right now, but AMSTI provides the training for the math coaches. Would they need an increase to support the training of the math coaches? Or is that already in there?
I think that's built into that three million up above.
Okay, I just want to make sure that they have the support, the training that they need to be successful when they go out to the school.
Excellent question, yes.
Do you think we have the available personnel to meet those positions if we already have a shortage in that area?
That's a great question.
That's a very good question. So these coaches would not be math teachers. They'd be elementary teachers who are proclivity for math. But they'll be elementary teachers. So we're not looking at pulling a content specialist, a math teacher. We're looking at an elementary teacher that just loves math, that's maybe really good at math, becoming a coach for his or her peers. But I do think, yeah, we do have a shortage of elementary teachers.
I was about to say that's a shortage.
So there's no question that it would be.
Would they be paid the same salary? I mean, is there, you know.
Depreciation.
We pay them, how do we pay our reading coaches, Andy, will you?
If they're, if we're borrowing them from a school system, we pay them what they're making in their school system. Probably by the, by the same day of the rate, if we increase the days, something like that. I think that's typical.
So they would, they're making essentially what they would make teaching. It's not really in.
Some of those are 12 months.
Some of, some of the state ones are 12 months. I don't think that we figured this on 12 months. I don't think so.
Well, it's an 187 day contract?
Yes. Because we figured it the same as the local reading coaches. So our state reading coaches that we send in, we do work extra time, more than the regular nine month contract. But the local reading coach that's embedded in that school is, makes the same, unless the local district, some local districts say add an extra month, so they work in the summer doing data and that kind of thing. But we didn't figure that in.
Which is a strain for a system that's already struggling financially and generally. Those same systems are the ones that have the greatest need.
It's true.
So that's a concern, will they not get the level of support that they need because they don't have the funds?
Well, can they use their ESA money and CARESAC money? I know it's only three years, but at least to get them moving.
They can, and some of them are doing that already. Some of them are hiring their own math coaches for now. But they won't be able to sustain it necessarily.
Some of the budgets are going up too because of the same reason the state was going to finance its revenue.
Right. I'm going to, obviously, seems like everybody's supportive of putting this in there. It was not in there at the retreat, this is one of the things that came out of that. We're putting it back. But I'm also going to make a note, we'll get, see Dr. Davis is back over there. We can get Sandy Ledwell to answer some of those specific questions about the coaching model because they've. because they've really modeled that out, as you can see, and they went to great detail figuring out which schools they would go into, how to support them, how to train those coaches. So, but that might be, I won't log this up next month, but that might be something next month to go into a little more at some point.
That'll be great.
But doing the coaching, y'all are saying yes.
Yes.
But you got more detail on what the plan is for how those coaches would be used.
The process. And also the administrators. I think administrators have to be brought into the conversation. Because administrators have to know what the role of the math coach is, what the role of the reading coach is. And that they can't, if, if another, if the receptionist is out that day, they can't pull that math coach in and say, you know, I would like for you to answer phones. Um, no, no, that's not their job.
That's true.
Well, this is where you're in trouble. Like, when I didn't have, I didn't qualify for a reading coach. So what I did is I used one of my teacher units and made them into a reading coach. I could have, but I did not use her in a different capacity. But according to what was dictated for reading coaches, they were not allowed to be counselors, they weren't allowed to do, you know, lunch duty and, you know, things like that. There were some, but that was local. So.
And we have that built in now.
I thought we did, because how important that is.
Not always been, but we do now.
Yeah, but.
So going right along that same thought, so the reading, reading initiative, we are asking for an increase to go from, so for local reading coaches, so local reading coaches out, not our state coaches, the reading coaches that are embedded in the school. What we do now is we send the district 52,008, 52,881 for a reading coach. So if they have any part of grades K-3, they qualify for a reading coach. What we have learned this year, in great detail, although it's, you know, we always have, you always have a few issues you have to go back and forth with. But several of our districts are, they're, well, I'm gonna back to, I don't want, I'm not gonna name the districts, but some of our districts were not placing reading coaches at every school, which is required by the Liberty Act. But, but what happens is we give them $52,000. Most reading coaches make more, significantly more than that, because they have a master's degree, they have more experience, and with benefits, they make closer to $80,000. And so the districts, some of the districts were saying, I'm gonna take two of my 52s and put that together and hire one person, and, and they're gonna be only part-time serving over here and most of their time over here. Which I, if I'm the local superintendent, I understand that. You make the math work. But they've not had an increase in the state reimbursement for their reading coaches in many years. So we're proposing just upping that to $60,000 per school to help defray that cost. Because we've sent them a pretty stern email that says, the law says you have to have one at each school, even if you're having to pay for it out of local funds, the law says you have to do it. And, and you've got to find the money to do it. So, and, and they're doing it. But I think we need to try to get them more money to support that.
Okay, so we would increase to $60,000?
We would increase to $60,000.
Will that cover the cost? Wouldn't it exceed $60,000?
That covers the cost of the salary, Mr. Craig. You know, I mean, with salary benefits, probably not.
Not.
Yeah, it'd come close to the average, to what the average is for a standard 187-day teacher, it's usually in the 52-ish range. Actually, once you add 50% and 20% benefits, it's not really close.
It's closer, closer than 50.
Yeah.
One nuance to it is, we started this years ago.
If a district just has one, one school in that band, they get $80,000.
Wow, okay.
So if you go to two or three or on up, then, then it goes to the 52. So you get a, actually, the ones that just have one, they get a full $80,000 for.
Oh, okay. Well, that's good.
That's good.
There's a, there's a, so the smaller systems tend to.
So this would raise the second one then to $60,000?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Makes sense. Yeah, that makes sense.
Right. They still get the first one.
Yeah, okay.
The second one, we go to $60,000.
Okay, that's good.
Why I need to probe here. So, so then, I'll only remind you what I know you don't need. But this, a lot of people see this spreadsheet. Those next four lines, we're paying for out of federal funds for a couple of years. But when the money runs out, we're going to have to remind our legislators that that money has to come back. I mean, we're, we're gonna set aside, you know, millions, I, I think it's like $105 million of our state ESAR funds for summer reading camps. Glad to do it. Think it's a great investment. But when that money runs out, we'll, yeah, the state will have to pick that up again. And it always worries me when they, you know, they use that money, excuse me, that would be funding that for something else. And then when you come back in three years and say, hey, we need that money back, then, you know, the money cannot have been committed to something else permanently.
How much did you say? What's that? I'm sorry, that summer reading camp, how much did you say you were?
I think it's $105 million. I have the exact number in a folder of it.
That's true, thanks.
Are we, I think we will have a better chance of convincing the legislature to fund it with state funds once the federal funds move out, if we're collecting data, you know, like every summer, and showing the improvement that our students are having. And so while we've got, you know, this time, and if we can just collect the data and show the impact, the positive impact that it has, I think we'll have better success.
Absolutely. And I think we're, I mean, that is absolutely our plan to do. And that's part of the ask to, you know, to keep ARI, the state piece together, so they can do all that data. Thank you. So we called, we originally requested $400,000. It went to $600,000 because we actually adjusted our request after we, remember, I told y'all, after we sent this over, once we, we got a better count, we thought we might need more, and so the legislature made that adjustment for us after we submitted. But we think, based on the projections, that $600,000 is enough to cover for next year too. So we did not, did not ask for an increase. Arts education, $200,000 increase, this is to support that arts, it's like a library, almost like an encyclopedia, so that, which has been built now in conjunction with the Alabama Arts Alliance and the Arts Council. But then we will have to own it and maintain it. Sean's giving me a yes. I think I understand it. And what it'll do, it'll be, it's multifaceted. So if I'm just a parent, I'm just a parent, if I'm a parent and I want my child to take violin lessons, I'll be able to go to this site and see where there's a violin teacher available in my area. And moreover, trying to do some vetting of that, so that you can't just get like some crack out there, you know, that there's a, some legitimacy behind it, a qualified teacher. So they're helping build this now, but once we build it, then we'll have to have it. And teachers can use it, but also parents can use it. And the design is that we will be the permanent owners of that database. So we'll have to have the money to maintain it every year and keep it up once it's built. And I know Ms. McCray's up there on the screen, but she might know more about it than I do, so she's my resident arts expert. The computer science for Alabama, $1 million, that's standard. We said we would increase by $1 million a year until we got to $3 million, and then we would maintain it $3 million. Now, let's be fair, obviously, we, we hope that demand for computer science programs is so great that we have to, we have to continue to grow it. But this is the last, that huge increase that would get it out to the, the original goal. The ELL, $2 million, that's to expand the regional specialist. And I know some of you have told me, you've heard that, that they need somebody, we got the money for to do those school-level folks, and they've got more money now than they had. Still not pay for everything. But then when they really run into a struggle, they don't have a regional person to call in every region. So we're asking for enough money to build that out. We did get a state administrator for ELL, which is something that the PCG study recommended. It's something we've been asking the legislature for, for some years. And we did finally, this last year, figure that out. And between the appropriation we got and doing some internal switching around, we actually gave up a unit in another area so we could get a new administrator in ELL.
Here at the state.
Here at the State Department.
And what student, her name?
Maria Franco.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, Maria Franco. So then, keep going down, military children support. So Purple Star Schools is something new that passed this past year, and we're, we're housing that. Mr. Roller over there has been, that's in his area. But these are schools, they can earn a Purple Star, which says that they're a military-friendly school. It's a competition kind of thing that the schools go through. And we're asking for $200,000 to support that work in those Purple Star Schools. And then $400,000 to create our own Trips for Teachers program. So you know, the federal troops to teachers went away. I had a Zoom call with the president of Stillman College, her name escapes me now, President of Stillman College and her person.
Cindy Warwick.
Workman?
Dr. Warwick.
Warwick, Warwick, yeah.
Works for Warwick.
Workman and Warwick. Workman, so they were both on the call. Thank you, Nick. That's helpful. So Dr. Warwick's the president, Dr. Workman's the manager of the program. But that program is going away, paid for by federal. But they told us for $400,000, they could continue the program. So they actually have, they have students that are in the program. By students, I mean retired military people or in the process of retiring who want to be Trips for Teachers. I think they have about 18, Nick, is that right, that need to finish? And the, like, the grant's gonna go away and there's no money for them to finish. They're like in year one of a two-year program. So this money would help finish out those folks, which I told her, I said, we'll find a way to help finish them out. But we'll also ask for the money to continue the program, a state-paid, paid-for program. And $400,000 is the number that Stillman gave us, that we pay for that.
Can we ask for a contract that they be employed with in our schools? So they finish out, they don't go Georgia, Tennessee?
Yeah.
Yeah, commitment?
I'll ask that question.
I mean, I, I certainly support it, but I would like for them to stay in Alabama if we're gonna put this in our budget request.
Right, it's gonna be a state. Okay.
I'm sorry, I let it pass me. How you're enhancing special ed beyond the allotment they get with the high-need special ed program? Did you just hit back on that? It was up at the top.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Craig may have to explain how we're doing that. Because I tried to explain it the other day, and I didn't do a good job, I don't think. But the high-need special education program, can you explain how we're doing that and what we've talked about?
To enhance what the local school districts are getting as far as teachers at the time.
We go kind of back to the beginning when we, when we envisioned how it was gonna work at the time. It's a pretty arduous process to apply for those funds. It's a small pot of money, it's about $3 million. And it was for literally those, it was administered to hit those really truly severe situations. And there was an application, and there was oftentimes angst involved with the applicant and the timing and the... Anyway, long story short, we knew we had this broad overarching shortfall in our investment in special education. We had the Augen Blick study, which kind of went through those and identified the various groups that typically cost more to educate on average. And they, they designed a kind of waiting system. So in the beginning, our, our intent with the monies was to raise it significantly and, and ease the way, ease the way that it was distributed and really distributed based on where the kids were. Kind of all of the waiting, but not, not inside the foundation program, but specifically this line item. Anyway, it's, you know, COVID hit, we did get the increase, and we got a bigger increase, I think, in '22, so it's a significant amount now. But we're still kind of taking it through that, that application process. So we're looking at potentially ways to, to identify where the kids are, where the additional costs are, and, and basically distribute it in a way that it would follow those kids. You know, without the, without the barriers of, of an application. Anyway, distribute it more freely.
Okay. Okay.
So that's, that's, that's what we're talking, we hadn't done that yet, but we're talking about that as a way to almost mirror that waiting, that, that assignment of money to where the higher needs kids are, the higher cost of educating the kids, having to follow those kids.
So that frees up, that relieves some of that financial burden on the local school system, where, you know, you might be paying a particular type of nurse $100,000 to address the needs of one child.
Right. And there's, and maybe we ultimately do a hybrid of that. Maybe we ultimately say part of the, of the whatever, million dollars, millions of dollars that it is, I think it's 17, maybe in, in the upcoming year. Maybe we do, maybe we leave $2 million of it for those truly specific situations. And, and there's other pots of money that are available for catastrophic type situations too. So, but the, the original idea was to take this money and distribute it like, as I described. So maybe, maybe we do a hybrid, still those, those truly, that are truly hardship on the district financially. Maybe do a hybrid type thing, so.
Okay.
Andy, is there a way, like, by my school system, and I have this situation, who do I call at the department to ask, what are the funds available to help me address the needs of my high-need students? Who's the point person?
Dr. Chambers is back there.
Yeah, they, they, they do a lot of that in their, in their everyday life, I'm sure.
But you could also help them find the money?
Yes, and there's a demo that just rather dealing with the process of getting those funds.
Okay.
Maybe I just signed off, I think, yesterday. And that's for the old money, not the new request that we're doing now. But that's for this year, letting them know and related services, anything that they might need.
Right. And the additional thing we have going ahead and put in place, and Dr. Chambers can talk about it more, so we're just to let you know, we have a process that, you know, you can only submit an application at a certain time of the year for the students. But as we try to take a look at opportunities for districts to increase the support needed for the students that may come in at any given time, we've decided to do a monthly approach. So they can actually submit at any point in time during the year. So as their time, anything changes during that time period, we can then afford them opportunity to get the funding.
I mean, that's very positive.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good.
Dr. Mackey, can I raise a question on the troops, the teachers, trips for teachers? I, I didn't really, this is an appropriation that we're maintaining for Stillman College. Is that correct? I don't want to misstate it.
That's correct. So the.
Current enrollment, wanting them a chance to finish.
Right.
Are we aware, is it a situation where these, this type program that Stillman is doing is being done by other of our universities on their own? Is this a new program? Because I do believe that I'm aware of some other schools that, that do recruit, whatever you call troops to teachers are, that do provide financial assistance to retirees and to people out of the military.
So.
With scholarship programs and other assistance. So I'm saying, do we know if this program is done as a test at Tillman, is being adopted or considered at other universities in Alabama?
So the Trips for Teachers program, which is of course a federally funded program, only if the money flows to the State Department of Education, and then we have to work with one college. and then we have to work with one college, a college does it for that state. And Stillman is the college for Alabama. They're the only place where you can do Troops to Teacher preparation. Now, that's not saying that, you know, UA may be giving veterans scholarships to people, but the Troops to Teachers program is based at Stillman.
Troops to Teachers is a definite specified program.
Right.
There may be, in our perception as citizens, the recruitment and steaming out and providing assistance in addition to the GIBL to teach, to military to become teachers in our shortages, especially in science and mathematics, maybe be going on without federal assistance.
It's true.
And that's why I said, I think, I would hopefully look at that as we.
We can do that.
We don't, because we don't communicate with some of these institutions to see that this is a model that they're using their other funds for. Because there's a lot of incentives to recruit military. I was recruited into the military, so I got something, am I, something close to me?
I have, but I'm off of the troops. Are you finished with your troops? I have a question.
Are you finished with troops? I've never finished with troops.
You're never. Dr. Chambers?
But now. I have a question. Just when you started speaking about the high special needs and medically fragile, of course, many of them, when they're transported, need a school nurse or somebody to go with them on the buses or whatever. Is that out of your budget, special ed budget? Is it out of the school nurses' budget? From whom? I mean, we've got to remember that they, those are very expensive, you know. Me, and sometimes those kids are on buses longer than we care for them to be, but with the nature of the beast, they have to have a medical nurse on the bus with them. Or even if you take them on a field trip, they have to have the nurse to go with them.
Well.
It's probably any combination of those.
Is any of the combination there?
IDA offered, I mean, I know when I was in the school system, we used any one or a combination of those, IDA funds.
Yeah.
Nurses' funds, local funds. I mean, so it's, it's however you, however you can do it.
Okay. But at least that's in our mindset with the budget.
Absolutely. And I think when you go back to that big request on the earlier page, $60 million, that's part of it because the obligation is, if I figure out, you know, I've got, I use my IDA funds, I use my state nurse funds, and if another child enrolls that needs the nurse, then the law is I have to provide them a nurse, whether the money's available or not. And then, of course, say, the only money there is, dig into local funds. And that's why the big part of that is to give them more money just to spend on nurses. And then they, the locals figure out how they match it all up. But that's a good question.
And I'm sorry to go backwards, but when we were talking about ARI, one request that I got was a need for literacy coaches for secondary ed. And that came over several times. Is that, is that built into the ARI budget? And also is letters training? I know we're planning to keep, you know, the, I think the long-term strategy is that each year we plan to train more teachers in letters training K through three. And is that, I just want to make sure that we're not overlooking it.
So first, the first page, the last line, multi-sciences of reading, multi-sensory strategies, that's letters.
Okay.
Right, so you'll see, no, we're not asking for any state money for that because we committed to do federal.
Okay. Okay.
And we should be, that's one, by the time the ESAR funds run out, the vast majority should be trained. We like to have some state money because there are always going to be new people coming in. But that's that, that's why you see federal funds out there beside it. The other piece, so the short answer is no. We do not have middle school, high school literacy coaches or specialists built into ARI. The law actually says that we cannot do that. ARI must be focused on K three. And as you know, one time we had the Ari Powell's model, which was a middle school literacy program. And anyway, the legislature didn't like Ari Powell's and they actually outlawed it. So we can't do that with ARI funds. Now, can we do something? Yes. So we've been asked, and the governor has put some of her money, her gear money into a pilot program for middle school literacy coaches, particularly focused in the Black Belt. I'm going to get, I'm not sure if they've identified the schools yet. And I don't want to put Elizabeth or.
Could you send that to us? I'd love to see which schools are going to receive the middle school.
You want Dr. Davis to talk more about it? It's a request that was brought to us last year. Again, the governor's office, I know we're with Mr. Moore, but also the Office for Minority Affairs was involved in that. And they wanted to do, to fund it out of the gear money, the governor's federal money. And so we've built that out. Again, that money will go away soon, but y'all have done the actual on-the-ground stuff.
Yeah, while we have that partnership with Dr. Blair in Bullitt County is the small pilot that's starting with the support of the governor. And I want to say it's like $2 million. The contract is actually ready to go. But with the literacy coaches and also doing some pilot work with, in a, with a small group, same type of middle school coaching with. Rita is helping with that with Alabama Mispractice Center as far as the, and it's going through our regional in-service center, UA, UWA, small, five small pilot sites. But we're trying to coordinate that so that we're all doing the same thing, using the same type of training and support. But the key where we have found that we think we can have the most leverage to support, not quote secondary, but four through eight, which we know some schools have, you know, K-12, K. Because those students that are going on to fourth grade with a good cause exemption from the law, we have to track those kids. And I don't mean the word tracking about it, but you have to keep up with them until they no longer have that deficiency. So those teachers in fourth through eighth grade, we're doing two things. One is offering that, the training to them. And it fits with what the coaches are also doing through the night house, the five-day in the summer that has the secondary, fourth through eighth. But also, we have had several fourth and fifth grade teachers asked to do the letters training. And while we have the federal money and we're not turning away any pre-K through third grade, we're getting, we're letting them train.
Sure.
It's because we, again, that's federal money, so it's not K through three. Where we're running into the issue now is wanting to have those, I know Muscleshells reached out, they wanted to use their October PD day to have that dyslexia simulation training for their secondary, for their middle school, and also some multi-sensory strategies. So we are trying to put together kind of a pool of folks that maybe are retired, that they could contract with. But also in May, when the Shelton School that does that training for us, we are going to put some of our state people through also because they're training our new ARI folks, but we can attend. So we are also attacking it that way so that our state folks that are not paid with ARI money, like instructional services or MAA, that we can go in and support too. So we're, that's part of that birth through 12th grade action plan. That was one of the things that they tasked us with. And so we were, we have several things. As a secondary English teacher, I kept saying, I don't know how to teach kids how to read. So we're, we are excited, as you can tell. I could do this, I could teach secondary.
Well, that pilot, will you present us the results afterwards?
Yes, yes. And we are, again, in the, we feel like we're actually in the stages where we're going now because we have the contract and we can actually put it into action. But it would not be possible without Dr. Mackey and the governor working together to make sure that we could utilize some of that reserve money that she has. So she put a task force together that worked beautifully to work with us and not something else.
And the needs assessment, you know, the in-service centers have, they're required to do a needs assessment of their district. And I was reading the email I got back from one. And he said, our needs assessment data and conversations with LEA central office staff indicate that they need more support in the areas of math instruction, which I think we all agree with, particularly at the middle school level, writing at all grades, reading and technology. And so that was one in-service center in my district. And then another one, first line, a desperate need for ELA support at the secondary level. So it's, it just, it seems to be, and I realize that the, that the law, the legislature may specify that it just goes K through three, but this could possibly be a way for our in-service centers to have a big impact and perhaps look for other sources of funds to meet that need.
And that's where, how we are utilizing the UA, UWA, what we think, utilizing that regional in-service center to do that very small pilot. It's separate from the one that the governor's funded, but it is similar in some of the same things that we're doing. But we're able to use some of the regional in-service center money. Dr. Morgan's working with us, so it all coordinates. And then our secondary ELA specialist, that was one of the first things Dr. Mackey allowed me to get in instructional services because we, we only had ARI. We didn't have any secondary. And that's one of the focuses that she has had this summer, is writing and providing those around the state as well as the ELA overview. And so the, we're, we're hopeful that we will begin to see some of that training pay off. And so it's, yes, she's been on the boat.
And I'm sorry about that. I just realized I had, we'd gone through it and I'm trying to ask that question.
And I want to be careful, just to be clear, I don't think there's any like anti-middle school feeling in the legislature. What happened then was, remember they, the money, there was so much money and the Ari Powell's program was growing so fast, it was starting to dilute the K three ARI program. And so then they just said, at that time, we didn't have a lot of money. Look, we only have limited money. We want the limited money we have spending K three. And that, and they actually wrote that into the law. And so the Ari Powell's just went away. But now that there is more money and we're trying to build pilot programs so we can show them, this is, one, it's needed, the districts are asking for it. Two, we have a solution to help the districts. And then I think in future years, we're going to be, we will ask for some literacy programs. Maybe not for every middle school or every intermediate school, but as they, for higher need schools first. So anyway, I think that we could possibly get there in time.
And with your math instruction for the middle school, we will have it ready. It's almost ready, but it is, we have a line in Dr. Ledwell that is also, for elementary folks, they kind of know with what the numbers training, which is the sister to letters, they'll know, you know, at the end of first grade, they're, the kids, if they're deficient in the counting by, they can't count to past 100 or use the 10 frames. But where you have the struggle is secondary. And that new math lab course that is in the new courses study, well, we have a graphic that shows that if, at the end of fourth and fifth grade, your students are struggling with these skills, this is the training, the numbers training component that your teacher slash tutor slash interventionist needs to attend. Again, it's two days. And so that goes all the way through those, all of those skills through eighth grade because we feel like they're building these interventionists, these tutors, they're building the time in, but the secondary folks don't know how to get the content. They don't know what's needed. And so we have made it very easy. But if then, and it's almost done, it should be done by the end of this week or beginning of next week. So that will help with the secondary math instruction because even though it's through eighth grade, we know that those skills, if they're missing those at the end of eighth grade, the ninth and 10th grade, well, so we, we have a prescribed way to say, let's look at your intervention time, how you built it in. And then your teacher needs to do this two-day training to meet whatever your data says. So we're very excited about that. I could speak in secondary, I could speak it all day. So, so yes, we, we know the need is there, especially now.
Right, that's very positive.
And I'll be glad, what I'll do is I'll be glad to send to Ms. Nora the actual flyer that's got the if-then's that we'll be sending out to the schools and sharing next week as we start our curriculums instruction. We're so excited we started next week to go back and start Athens. And then also the pilot project, the both middle school grade levels, the small one and then the one with the governor. And I think it's critical that Rita has been instrumental in, she's instrumental in our MTSS rollout, but also yes, because of those components of Ari Powell that she knows were so critical. And then aligning the work with the coaching framework that both ARI and AMSA folks are also using, so.
That's great, yeah, thank you for that flyer.
And I'll send both of, because so that y'all can already see what the pilots are too, so.
Will there be an opportunity for teachers that may not fall under UA or UWA or in critical need schools, will they have an opportunity to benefit?
Yes, after we do the small pilot this year, because we, what we didn't want to do is if there were elements that, that didn't work, we wanted to use the five small systems in the, that UA, UWA, and then also the one in the rural area with that, with Dr. Blair and that task force. Because there aren't a lot of models around the nation at all with, if you're studying especially with this high dosage tutoring and the middle grades. So it's, we want to make sure at the end of this year that we've kind of looked at, because they're starting, you know, the process now, we're waiting for October. We were actually asking for funding source codes yesterday. But the, so that once we know, we'll be able to expand it. But we, we did not want to, we didn't want to do anything where we didn't have any data to back up what we were doing.
That makes sense. Work out any kinks before you roll it out.
Yes, but they all do align, it's beautiful.
So keep us up on it.
Yes, I'm sorry, but I was so excited. And Mr. Craig has been great to provide funding to us.
Nice, Mr. Craig.
Pulls money out of half.
He does.
Okay, so we'll jump back, we'll always go back to, and remember, we'll vote next month. I'm going to show you that minute, but there's plenty of time to add things in. Charter School Commission, no change. Regional Safety, Safety Specialist, that's $800,000, plenty to fund that. Mental Health Collaborative Training, that's the training piece. We leave that at $250,000. But we do want to ask for $1.5 million for Mental Health Services Coordinator so we can give a grant to each district. And we spent a lot of time talking about that. We know that $40,000 does not actually cover the whole thing, but at least get there and then we will come back and ask for more. The, I think the Charter School Commission may be, oh, I know what it was. Got taken out in one place and added into another, added new schools for Alabama. So assessment, now let's, I want to talk a little bit about this number. And, because that's a big old number.
It's a big old number.
Assessment's very complex, as I'm learning more and more every day. So look at the right side of that. So part of that is to, Ms. Hicks is not back with us, but, Andy, you may understand this better, but, so the ACAP summative, one is we have to, we're paying for part of it with federal money now that we'll have to pick up with state money, I think, eventually. We also had to, because we did change ELA standards and math standards, I think the maths we paid for this year, we have to update those questions as we talked about. So that's all built in there. The ACT with writing, we asked for the big number. So what you see here is 3.6 million would be that, when she gave you all those breakdowns this morning, that would be if we did pre-ACT nine, ACT 10, ACT 11, Work Keys 12, and a third administration of ACT for students that chose it. So that is the whole suite. And we thought it was better to ask for the whole suite. And then if the legislature comes back and says, well, you can't have this, but we'll give you $2 million, then we would be back working with you and the assessment team deciding which parts of that to do. But I think there is support for doing another administration of ACT. I think we'll get at least part of that. And then the ACAP alternate, so that's, that alternate for very high need students, that is a very, very expensive test to build and to administer. And we essentially just did it this year out of our, Mr. Craig found money in the hat to pay for that. But, so we didn't get any funds from the legislature to do those tests for high need special ed kids, I don't think. And so we're just asking. And so we're just asking, at least asking for it. Um, and then the Scantron extension, that's a piece we had, I had not anticipated. But let me tell you why we, we think that's important. We, Scantron was our old system. We've had it. It's legacy system. We've had it for years. Um, and we used it temporarily for those two bridge years as our federal testing. And so our contract's going away with that. But the problem is that all those, both innate questions and those retired A C A P questions. How we get those to teachers to use is by loading them into Scantron. And so then they can pull a test rather than having to, you know, cut and paste like I used to do it with, with tape. They can pull a test and do that. And so it makes it much easier on the teachers. Um, our, I mean, they have, I trust these folks and they tell me we need to keep it so that our teachers can pull those questions down and utilize them. Rather than just sending them a paper copy of the questions and asking them to make their own test based on this. So we, um, so we're gonna ask for keeping that. We're gonna, and assessment is a black hole that I don't quite understand. Mr. Craig understands it better than I do. But we do get to spend some federal money on assessments because they require some. But, but, so we have to kind of balance every year between state and federal funds. So we're asking, we figured in a good year, add it all to what is the gap that we currently are now having to cover? Plus the, kind of the wish list, which is to increase those A C T tests. And let's put it all in there and see how much, you know, what we can get. Does that make sense? If that is a breakdown.
And Dr. Mackey, the, when the schools administer the Scantron, and thank you for clarifying why it's important that they keep it. But if they do, like I, I've been to, um, well, I went to Florence and saw how they, um, they can get the results like right away. I mean, and so you don't have to wait for, we don't have to wait for Maggie to send about the results. They can just like that afternoon, get the results.
Yep. So as a teacher, I can pull retired night questions. Do that assessment and get that, those results all in the same one. And I can do that. Soon we'll be A C A P. I can pull, if I'm teaching third grade, I can pull, you know, retired A C A P questions. Do an assessment based on that and then see where my students are. I mean, I think it would be, instructionally, it would be a huge win for our teachers. Make it much easier for them to do what we're asking them to do.
Thank you.
Sure. So then, um, tenure personnel hearings, that's, that's, that's paid for tenure hearings. We pay for those, by the way. It actually is fairly cheap. You think about two hundred thousand dollars. I don't think we've taxed it out in years. So we pay for the hearing officers to hear anytime there's a dispute with a tenured teacher in the local district. And it goes to a hearing. We pay the hearing officer. Okay, now the next several line items, I'm gonna kind of, you know, fly through. We're not asking for increases in those. We talked about some of them in more detail. The big one for, for me is that teacher mentoring program, four million dollars. That's two years of mentoring now instead of one. But that does cover it. We, we, um, we convinced that they fully funded last year and we, you know, it's just now, so now it's just self-perpetuating, new teachers every year. The top of the next page. There's the remote learning hub pilot. And I've had a request, I know Dr. Cheston asked me and maybe some else to too, about where that remote hub is gonna be. And I'm not, I'm gonna make, I've got to get that and make sure. It's, it's Bullitt County, but I'm not sure that there's not another site in additional. And I'm not sure about that. But I'm working on that, um, to get that information. We have a call with the National Math and Science Institute that's kind of, that's running, designing that project. Someday next week, so Wednesday or Thursday next week. And I think we'll get some more kind of concrete data from them. Then down, the next increase we're asking for is JAG, three million dollars, which would bring us to a total of fifty programs at sixty-five thousand dollars. And we're currently funding them at fifty-five thousand dollars. Just a couple of years ago, it was at thirty thousand dollars. So this will be twenty-two new programs and it would bring the, the cost at each program or the stipend at each program up to sixty-five thousand. Dr. Hall, question, do we know where those new programs are going? Have we already identified the districts or we're waiting to?
No, we will wait to them. And we, we identify them based on need, where, where it looks like a program we need it the most. But there are other factors that come into play as well.
And that's still a goal to get one in every district by twenty twenty-five. So we, we, they've got to have that to get back on that track. Because it's been a little funded a couple of years.
Once we have an answer on this number and how many we will be able to increase. Can we have a presentation on where we expect to be putting those programs?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. The teacher marketing, you got that? We're just building it out. So we, we're gonna ask for another year because you always had to stay a little bit ahead of it and see. And I think we want to be very nimble with that. So as we see what the reaction is, maybe which things are working, which things are not working as well. That we redesign the program if we're, if the legislature keeps it in place in the future years. So in my mind, it would not be, oh, now we've built something. We just keep running the same thing over and over. It can't be. It's gotta be every year sort of redesigned based on what's working, where we see the greatest need, so forth. N B C T, a little bit more money for scholarships to bring more people into the pipeline. So that's paying for the scholarship for them to do the N B C T. The next piece is, um, or the piece right above it is to pay this actual stipends. And we think there's plenty in there. As we look at the pipeline coming in, there's plenty in there to pay for that. Yes, sorry.
What is our Hudson Alpha contract for a million dollars for?
Hudson.
Hudson Alpha.
Alpha Institute. It's right about.
This, yeah, it's just a, it's a pass through. I mean, it's just, the legislature gives them a million dollars.
Well, I know Dr. Lamb's presented to us and I'm very familiar with that operation. So I didn't know.
It's a pure pass through. Anything else? It's just a, they get a line item in the budget. We send them the money. Um, a good organization, I know you're not, I mean, they are, but, but we don't. We just pass the money through.
I'm surprised they don't get a million.
There's another line item in a different place. This is just one, one space. The, um, the, the other, the, um, professional development, computer training, we think all that is fine. Didn't have, didn't have any increased requests from staff. Okay, T M at the very bottom. So these are those technology in motion specialists that are at, they're placed at the regional in-service centers. And what we're asking for is a minute and a half more, which would fund one at each rig. And it would expand their capacity for ongoing demand of trains. Look, these folks have been, they've been invaluable to us in the power school rollout. And, um, they're not nearly enough of them. I wish we had had this before we did the rollout. But hopefully they can also do the training in how to use the new data dashboard. I mean, that's their job is P D for teachers. And we need one at least in every cent, in every region. And we don't have one in every region. And some regions need multiples. So that's a request that came from them. This is how much we need to run, to make that more effective. The next page, just, Dr. Reynolds asked a question about Hudson Alpha. So Southern Research is a sister institute. They, they're, they're parity. Special education preschool. So that's a big request. But you know, those are, we, we have to start providing services for children at age three. And we got a lot of traction on this in the last two years. A lot of legislators thought, why would we give the Department of Ed money for preschool when we're already paying early childhood for preschool? But they're two totally separate things. And once they understood that, and they understood these children who are getting special needs services beginning at age three. The floodgates kind of opened. You can see we went from, I think, like two million to five point six million to seventeen point six million. And so we thought now, why not ask for what, for, yeah, what's actually being spent by the locals? So we would ask for an increase. And then the special education certified behavior analyst program. These are behavior analysts that are specially trained to work with children with autism. And I'm looking at Dr. Chambers because she can, she can speak to it in great detail if you want to ask some questions. But it is a special certification for, uh, behavior specialists that work with children with autism. And we, we asked for this last year. We didn't get any. But the, um, plan would be if we got eight and a half million, we could put almost one in every district. But we would do, you know, grants based on, it'd be an application program. I mean, there's no question that's a growing need. The special education stipend program. So we've been asked, y'all know, we've talked about something that would be teams like, but not a teams contract for special needs teachers. So what we're proposing here is, um, essentially now that, that got copied down from the top down. Yeah, this would be a grant program to L E A's. It's not support the certified behavior analyst. This would be, um, essentially a five thousand dollar stipend for every special needs teacher. And you asked about this when I had the other slides, uh, Dr. Richardson did. And so our recommendation would be that this would be like N B C T, not a one-time thing. But this would become a regular pay enhancement for people who teach special needs children. And we would write rules then around that. Basically, I mean, if we, we could get there. But in my mind, what I've designed is, is that if you had a special ed certification and you taught special needs children three quarters of the day. So if you're on an eighth period day, six periods out of the eight, then you would qualify for a full stipend. And you might say, well, why six out of eight? Well, every teacher gets a planning period. And then a lot of our special needs teachers actually get a second planning period to do, like I, like they get a planning period to, to work on plans for their children and then I E P period. So I think we want to, we, we would want to build some of that capacity in at least. And then if we had, you know, obviously, we deal with, as we have with teams, if somebody's like, they're only part-time or this or that. But this would be different because we're not asking, in our design, the legislature might change it. What we're asking for, this would go to every special ed teacher, K through twelve, every exceptionality.
I was about to say for every except speech and all the way through. Okay.
Every exceptionality. Gift, uh, no, not gifted because that's not considered an exceptionality, actually. We've got a gifted line item separate, but it does not include gifted. We did that because we actually don't provide gifted teachers. Now, I'm gonna get, now, we, we provide, they use a teacher's unit. Most of them use one of their teacher units for gifted. But they're required by law to cover, you know, special education. Gifted is not considered special education. They get a gifted education plan, but they don't get an I E P of individualized education. It's a good question. But unfortunately, the answer is no. It would not cover gifted. Or we didn't add gifted in. Not saying it couldn't be added, but this would be only for children who qualify for an I E P. Teachers who are certified to teach such children.
Do some school systems do an I E P for gifted?
No, they do a gift, they do a G E P.
G E P.
So it's a gifted education plan. I said, it's different. It's, it's not as involved usually as an I E P. But they all do that for gifted child, gifted child gets a G E P. But the G E P is not protected, protected class, is that, under federal law. Anyway, it's not federally recognized. Special education and the I E P is federal law under, um, I D E A. Gifted is not a part of that. That's simply a state program. It's not federally recognized. Am I making any sense? In my mind, it makes sense, but I don't know if I can explain it.
So what's the gifted students program down a little bit?
So, so gifted students, what you see, what we're asking is a ten million dollar increase. That would go to the districts on a formula basis to pay for gifted teachers. So right now, they, like when I was a principal, you know, I, I had a gifted, full-time gifted teacher on my campus. But I just had to use one of my teacher units and make one of them a gifted teacher. And what this, what we would like to build toward is a program much similar to what Mr. Craig talked about with the special needs program. To, yeah, to give them money that can help, can help alleviate what a lot of them are paying for with, with local lines now. And I think ten million is actually what the gifted education association, there's an association of gifted teachers is what they've asked for. Now that, I think they ran the numbers. To total to like pay in addition to the foundation program. A separate gifted teacher in each school is like sixty-eight million dollars. But knowing that that's some, you know, a huge request, um, we started here at ten million dollars. But I appreciate you asking that because that does go with this, this special needs. Yeah, it is trying to get both ends of that spectrum. Teacher in-service centers. So we got, I appreciate, y'all did a good job going out and talking to those in-service. So what we, what you see here is a, 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 essentially a fifty thousand dollar increase in the base budget for each in-service. So we take most of them from like two hundred and ten thousand to two hundred and sixty thousand. They actually, it's a formula to that. Some of them get more than others because they have more teachers to serve. But essentially, most of them have about two hundred thousand dollar budget. So it's about a twenty-five percent increase. And that's just base money to go to them unobligated for anything. To help them pay salaries and overhead. And then you'll also see built throughout, because we contract with them, like those T M's. So getting that one, one and a half million more for T M's also supports them. And so there's several things built in here that would help strengthen the in-service centers. But we felt like, based on your conversations, one thing that they just need is just an increase in their base allocation, which has not been increased. In year, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure in the twelve years that I've been in Montgomery, it has never been increased. And you know how much cost has gone out of that system.
I would like to ask though, for some accountability in terms of when you say some are paid more because they are serving more teachers. But are they serving all the teachers in that district? I mean, I prefer, if we're going to increase the budget by twenty-five percent, and I believe they deserve it. I believe we also need to have some sort of recording. So that we know, you know, how many people they are serving, how many districts. And, and I.
I've seen that before. I think maybe I just, Elizabeth presented it to us or something. But I've seen that where we saw how many teachers, how many P D, how many, the number of hours served by in-service center. And was this a thing that they have to, I mean, from which, when we were talking, they had everything delineated out. Is there not a reporting already in place, reporting?
Where work goals at? Um, because in the past, they've had just the annual report that is just sent to legislators. And so we are actually looking at accountability in that report, um, also based on return on investment and. and evaluation impact, so that it's, because what you've seen is just numbers, number of teachers trained, or number of BLUs that may have been given, a number of, so we are looking at the highest impact research, um, Killian's book, but they were able to identify that how they evaluate their impact, there were, they didn't have any collective tools that looked at the top two, which changed student achievement. And so, that is the work that we are doing now, and they are leading, so that we are reporting, A, on the data that they have for their district, and what they used, their report card from last year, and then also the number of CSI schools, or all of that information, calling that in one area, and then aligning your professional development to that is the new, is what we did for the first time, then the budget, and we actually sent budget requests back and said, no, it wasn't yet. And then, now is the reporting of not only just numbers of people trained, but, so we're, it's just been very general.
Right. But when we actually, like when Dr. Chestnut and I just, as an example, talked to our Region Ten, I mean, they knew that they were based on needs assessment, they knew to which areas were in more, that they were in more of a need, and they said they hated to say no, but sometimes they, of course, had to, to go to these smaller areas that were in greater need, and plus, they knew that the areas couldn't really come to them because of transportation money, you know, travel and all that. So, you know, we need to, to me, we need to figure out, those that are doing the stellar job needs to be held up and shown the way to do it, and maybe be given, you know, cost benefits for it, and if those are some concerns that might be out for some of the other ones, we've got to be more cognizant of what is actually going on. And I think that's, these discussions that we're having, and we're going to do ours quarterly with our centers, that if they know our eyeballs are on them, that always helps. I'm sorry, Dr. Chestnut.
I agree with you. I think they're very open, and when we look at the new assessment that we just talked about earlier, isn't it embedded in there where they are referred for support from the regional in-service center based on the results of the data? Would there be any kind of assessment of the performance of the sessions that are provided from the regional in-service centers? Will there be something where the teachers can get some feedback that?
So, in, in the past, there was a survey, and then there actually became a, used kind of different surveys, but that is the only consistent tool that was used, and so that's where we're headed. And also, the data driving the.
Different.
Yes, so we meet, yes, so we meet monthly, and next month will actually be, you know, to look at, because once this data is non-embargo, that's what also will drive what, what their PD, what they're offering, and then they have to, again, align their budget to that, so that it's, so that it all aligns to meet the needs, and then also identify the areas that aren't getting served, because what you've mentioned is not the norm, based, has not in the past been a required norm to focus on those areas that need it the most, or that don't have, they don't have PD directors, you know? So, we have been working this last year, and great, great strides to focus the PD on more than just, I want you to come, or I want you to buy me some books. And I'm not saying that that's been what's been happening all across the state, but there were kind of different, everybody kind of set their own norms and how they worked, and the collaboration and the accountability, and when y'all adopted those standards too, professional learning standards, it's very clear about the accountability.
Well, and in anything, it's your leadership, if you have a strong director who is making sure that things are moving, but they need to be aware that we're on them, and discussions like we had in Dr. Bynum from Troy was just, you know, she had all of her information and all. So, they need to know that, and plus, if they, you know, for them to be able to do the good that needs to be done, you know, they, they need the money to do it, and, you know.
And I think we need to be reasonable with our requests. I have, one of mine's service center directors said that the state sent her materials to deliver to, I believe it was Fort Payne, and she said, I don't have a travel budget. I couldn't, you know, how, I'm having to use my coffee machine to pay, you know, to pay for this, and then I'm expected to go hand-deliver it, and, and so, I think there's frustration. And then, one said, and, and Dr. Mackey, you may remember this better, this is a little bit before my time, but it said, before the Great Recession, pre-two thousand eight, the in-service centers were funded at three hundred and fifty thousand.
I guess right.
And so, three, I mean, so they've gone from three hundred and fifty thousand down to two hundred something thousand, and in the meantime, the universities set their salaries, right? So, so every time the university gets a raise, they would get a raise, and then they, universities will have certain grades, you know, that somebody comes in and they're paid on, and so their frustration was, once we pay the salaries, that they used to have four employees, now they can only afford two, and yet, the workload hasn't changed. And so, and that after they pay the indirect costs to the universities, pay the salaries, they only have about ten percent of that funding left to do PD and all the other things we ask. And this is a combination, I won't read through all of them, but a combination of some of their requests. One was, again, that literacy specialist for the higher grades, that they really would like one in each in-service center that would work with them, there's such a huge demand. They also need math.
Math.
They said that math, especially middle school, that's a big need, they want data analysts. They said, look, we've got data from all of our schools.
I heard that too.
We would really like to have.
That's true.
A data analyst.
You have that for me? But they are attending.
They are attending the same data analytics training that all of my other staff, including me.
But they would just like somebody part-time, like to come, just a person who has the time to do that, and, but so that they can better serve their schools. So, like, if we understand the data, then we can better meet their needs. And then, they said another request that they don't, that schools tell them they don't know where else to go to get this, is support for new teachers. They said that so often, new teachers, we have the mentoring program, I think, but, but it's that that, sometimes new teachers fall between the cracks, and that, that, you know, so, and then service centers say they get, in their needs assessment, that is a request that they get a lot, but they're, they don't, they don't have, they don't know how to meet that need.
Well, and sometimes, the new teachers have no preparation to teach, they're brought in, and because they agree to serve.
Right.
They have had no preparation, and so even though they benefit from the mentoring program, their preparation for teaching is very low.
Elizabeth, may I piggyback on that, because we, one of our centers was talking about that. And so, when you bring your directors together, first of all, do they have to come?
Yes.
Do you take attendance?
Yeah, oh, yeah, I'm in every one of them. They're from nine to two thirty.
Okay. And then, is there a time for them to say, oh, we are in desperate need for a new teacher?
Mentoring.
Mentoring. And then, Troy can say, oh, we started one, and this is what we're doing. Is there that type of learning and sharing from each other that, you know, our teachers love when we give them that opportunity, or whatever else, or any other needs? That they can learn from each other, or in the camaraderie, they could say, well, if y'all come over and visit us, we can help you with this, if we can come visit you and do, you know what I'm saying? So, we can do more of that.
So, the, I can only speak for, since I've had them, we started our monthly meetings virtual, so we did not do that. We had three-hour meetings, virtual, still every month. We had our first face-to-face last month at class, so we could social distance, but that's why we went from nine to twelve to nine to two thirty, and, so that we can build that time in. So, I'm not going to tell them, no, no, since I have been here, or been in charge of them, that has not been, we have not had the time virtually, but that's why.
Got you. And did they come here, is it Montgomery to?
Yes, ma'am, to class. And so, that is a key, key component. But I will tell you, I told them the same exact thing that I told my staff here in the building, it's hard to go and ask for more money if we don't have any common results to show that we're measuring your impact, and they, they haven't. And I'm not being ugly, but there's nothing besides a survey in Power School, I'm like, I'm not going to go ask for money if we don't have anything to show what our three or four non-negotiables are, that we're all doing together, communication was one, that, you know, and then also measuring in some form or fashion, you know, and I'm not talking about a big external evaluation, but, so we've had those discussions, and they, they build their budgets, so they can build, they've all built in some travel, so I don't know why they would say that. We have a section, and they had to present their budgets to all of, everyone, we all heard them, and so they'll do that again this year, and then, if they need the money, we're gonna, you know, know where to go.
I will say, one of our, one of the service center directors that I spoke to specifically said that she was looking forward to the analytics in Power School.
Yes.
And we had a really good discussion, Dr. Laura Crowe, we had a very good discussion about what I hoped she would be able to gain from the analytics in Power School, and then be able to train, she used the term, train the trainers.
Right.
But be able to help her teachers have, like a team leader and be specific in, in how to use Power School properly. So, I think the analytics piece is coming.
September twenty-fourth is the.
September twenty-fourth.
Is when we start, yes.
How are you reading it originally, or?
Well, no, they, they're training the state, and I, I just pushed up and invited and made sure that we, that the regional in-service center directors were included in that state, so.
So, the state will train the RIs?
Yes, sir.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
She pushed it out today.
Do we determine placement and contract of in-service centers based on area or population? And how?
I'm not sure about that.
Well, areas are set, Dr. Bydon's legislature. So, they're set, they're actually set.
But do they change? We've seen, you know, I live in the lo, I am, the largest city in Alabama is in Alhamsville. We've seen a drastic modification, and it's going to affect some of our districts in the centers of population in Alabama. And if that's happening, and that's one of the concerns that we have, if it goes to the whole Madison City and the other school systems, the stressors on those in-service centers to serve a larger population than some other in-service centers who may have other problems, because I've explained to them, it's different if you have a large geographic area versus if you have a large population area. I happen to belong in an area that has a smaller geographic area, but a higher population area, and that impact has an effect on the in-service centers that are in my district, and Belinda's district as well. But that's Florence, it's in her district. But I'm saying, are we factoring in, or were the legislature factoring in determining where they are, do we need to feed them information? If they don't consider it, that they should, because in my opinion, and I understand those of you who have large geographic districts and, versus being with a much smaller one, what's going to happen? So, with the reality of population changes, and the equity that should be spoken to in the 2020 census, are we going to contemplate modification of the services we provide?
So, the in-service center, in-service center regions are essentially designed around the location of the universities. There're eleven, actually twelve universities, but there're eleven regions, so there are split, UWA and UA split the Western Black Veil, and then, in Huntsville area, it's, it's split between UAH and A&amp;M, though A&amp;M is the lead partner in the in-service center, and UAH.
Athens State doesn't have an in-service center in.
Does, Athens State has one. So, there's one across the Tennessee Valley, there's one at UNA, one at Athens State, and one at A&amp;M. And they essentially go down, one of the issues that I think, I think Dr. Cardy mentioned this morning, so for instance, technically, either Athens or UNA one has Walker County, but most of the residents in Walker County are closest to the center at UA.
That's what.
And so, they often say, can we not go to Tuscaloosa for our stuff instead of having to drive to Athens?
And the rationale at Athens is, we have, Limestone County is the largest growing county in the state, and their enrollment is dramatically increased, and they've become an independent four-year college since then, many of these plans were developed.
And we do allow those people in Jasper to go to UA, but there is a, but UA center cannot solicit or advertise in Walker County because it's in, it's outside their service area. They can go there, but they can't, but the university, their in-service center can't go up there to distribute flyers, basically.
But what I'm saying, to continue my concern is, if we've seen a modification of population and area, and we're doing reapportionment for those reasons, and the population growth and student growth would parallel, in my opinion, the population growth, are we going to recommend modification based on what you just said, a classic example of Athens going all the way to Walker County, when its population's increased more than Walker County itself? So, why, it dilutes the opportunity for the Athens center to serve, because it's trying to serve Walker County. It would do well off to not have to serve Walker County.
Well, yeah, probably, that'd be a good discussion for us to have with those directors. And we.
I'm just asking, if y'all, my question was, is it determined based on geographic area or necessary services delivered?
Geographic area.
Well, then, perhaps we need to consider populations a factor.
How consider, and it's, it's set by the.
Yeah, it's set by the legislature.
I know, but we, we have input to the legislature, I assume, if we're, if it's part of our service delivery.
Dr. Davis, I heard you, when you talked about the measurement of outcomes, you said the word "all." And I know that Ms. McRae and Dr. Chestnut and I met with one of ours, who gave us data that was very explicit, so some are producing what they should, but the key word is "all," right? Okay. Also, what came up that I think would be very beneficial, was to keep them involved in our new teacher evaluation program, the fact that it's more of an observation tool, because they felt that they would be able to do PD, after you all continued to train them, that would help teachers, knowing that it was a new system.
And I'm not sure, when you spoke with yours, but that was our main, we bring in different updates, so that was our main update at our last month's meeting, was the ATOP, and we had three of the twelve that are actually, I threw out the eleven that are actually train the trainers, but we did the overview and update with all of them, so I don't know.
No, it was mentioned, but they said to continue.
Yeah, right.
Because we had UA and UWA, and I had UAD and Monta Vala share with us.
Okay, okay, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
We, we have the strongest relationship with the Rigs we've had in a long time, and that's been good. You know, we made them, we used to just give them money, and there was essentially no, when I came here, no communication between the department and the Rigs, and no formal communication. Sometimes there were, certain people, some of our school, our school improvement folks had great relationships with their local rig person, but there was no formal, and so we started doing an MOU with them, and some of y'all may remember, a couple of universities refused to sign originally, and, but they all came around and did, and a couple of them have changed directors since then, we got some really strong directors, and now we've lost some strong directors too, who retired, but I think the future for strengthening those regional centers and using them as kind of an arm of the department is better off than it's ever been, which is always, before I was at the department, always what I thought should happen is they should be kind of an arm of the department, but the Rigs are an odd Frankenstein, that they, they, they're. But the RICS are an odd Frankenstein, that they, they, the employees work for the universities, as Dr. McCarty says, and in some places, they put them in the College of Education, and in some places, they're in the College of Graduate Studies or they're, so they, the university gets to determine where they go and what they make. And that's a university decision. Then their funding is pure pass-through from the legislature. They have some responsibility to the department, but then they also have an oversight board. And I know when I was in, in the Jacksonville State region, I was on the oversight board. And so the oversight board was responsible for reviewing those surveys to end of the year and making sure that they were meeting their mission. So they really answer to their oversight board, their university, where they're located, and the State Department. And it makes it, you know, sometimes very hard for them because it's like, well, who's, who am I? But I want us to make them more and more an arm of the department. Now, all my university friends who might, there are none of them listening to this, but they might be tagged in and listen later. Not saying take it away from the universities, they're great partners. But where they become more and more an arm of our initiatives. And we help fund that then, in partnership with those universities, but, and, and making sure we have the same quality everywhere. I think, so base appropriation of them, and then we're gonna continue to work with them. And I'll make sure that Dr. Davis, I don't know if she has, I know some of y'all have given me your notes from your meetings with them, but I don't have all of them, but if you'll share those with Ms. Martin, we'll make sure they, we have those and, and, you know, inform our discussions with them. Science in Motion is actually related. This is, uh, because those Science in Motion programs are also located regionally at the universities, um, tied to Amstey. We really need to build that out. I know that there's some, um, there's some misunderstanding of Science in Motion out there, but I'm, I'm gonna give a quick, quick personal testimony. I was in a, two personal testimonies. I was in a school in one of our very rural poor counties in, in northwest Alabama, I think in Ms. McRae's area, um, a couple of years ago now. But they were doing an ACM lab. And that school, they did not have a science lab, I, I doubt that school had a beaker. Like, they would not be able to do high-quality chemistry and physics if, if Science in Motion had not rolled a van up there that was equipped with the most high-tech experiments going. And then my second, um, is my own son, my son who's a senior. The only thing he has asked me for is to support Science in Motion. Because he is doing awesome physics, um, experiments, labs, Science in Motion, that they do not have the equipment to do at his school. And, you know, he's going, he's not going to, I mean, it's, they have needs like every school, but it's like, not like it's the most poor rural school in the state at Pike Road. But they don't have the equipment to do these high-level technical experiments that he's getting to do because of Science in Motion. So I know a lot of people out there don't understand it, but I'm telling you, there's we, we have got to, if we talk about parity in kids in, in Sumter County and Pike Road and Hoover, all being able to get the same experience before college, then we have to offer all of them the same quality of scientific research. And we can't do that unless we do Science in Motion, so that's my sermon.
Dr. Mackey, would a million dollars allow them to stand on their own two feet? And fully funded, so that, because they've been draining Amstey to pay the fans recently.
And would not be an expansion, this would just allow them to do what they're currently doing without taking money out of Amstey.
And do they also have accountability, like you were talking about the in-service centers?
Yes, ma'am, because they, we actually have someone here at the state that actually oversees and ACMS part of that. So yes, I, personally, I'm willing for that, to look at that, these national models, but, um, expanded, but look at that.
And does ACM, do they have access to the, I guess because they're high school, they would be more interested in the ACT, like the science reasoning?
Yes.
Yes.
Portion, okay.
And we do it in physics, chemistry, biology, I think. Is that right?
We do.
Don't we do it in biology?
Yes, sir. And we do physical science, which will include, you know, both of the, it includes the physics part as well.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, oh, stay close. Okay, so now we get into the foundation program. I know we're, I don't, I'm gonna keep going through this next page if you want to, but if y'all wanna take a break, I'm fine with it. So foundation program, uh, three hundred and thirty-five million dollars. So look, let's look what that would include, these are huge increases. First you see, remember that the stabilization fund was ninety-five million dollars to, to make sure we didn't lose any teacher units related to the decline in enrollment. So we are assuming that money will just roll back into the foundation program this year. Um, but then we're asking for career coaches. So y'all know this is, I mean, this is vital. If we, we're asking every child to do the FAFSA. We're asking for every child to finish with a college career-ready credential. And if we're gonna do that, we've gotta have adults to help counsel them. And so twenty-two million, eight hundred and eighty-two thousand, we give us a career coach at every high school. So that would be, you'll see that, that include, um, currently we have a hundred and seventeen that are spread throughout the state. We would need to add two hundred and sixty-five to put one at every high school. And then the next one is increasing teacher units. So now this is the big line item, this is a quarter of a billion dollars. But what we did essentially said, if we, if we get away with the current divisors in grades four through eight, and we had, we used the K-three divisors all the way up through K-five, and we used this nine-twelve divisors, six-twelve, what would it mean? Well, that would be an increase of thirty-two hundred teachers, and it would cost two hundred and fifty million dollars. And that would be, again, when you get calls from, from folks saying, I got thirty-five kids and my child's seventh grade in English class, well, that's the way to fix that. Now, the counterargument's gonna be, if you have a teacher shortage now, where are you gonna find thirty-two hundred more people? And I don't think, to be honest with you, I don't think we would get all that money in one year from the legislature. And I don't think we could get the capacity to hire all those teachers in one year. But I think that's the goal. And if we could even chip away and say, well, this one year, what if we just went, just did the fourth grade? And, and made, instead of K-three, just brought those divisors up, make them K-four. And, and then begin to work our way, but, but it's essentially fifty million dollars per grade to do that.
I like it.
I do too.
And then adding three contract days again, this is probably a long shot to get all of that, but we, we had that discussion, this would be three PD days, and they cost, um, about seven million dollars a piece, it's actually relatively cheap compared to other things. So about seven million dollars per day.
I think that's a one-day amount.
Oh, that's a one-day amount, oh, okay, so it's about
I wonder it was so cheap.
Yeah, so it'd be sixty-three million for if we did three days.
That's what it looks like.
And you didn't service him or not port him in the state, do I? You didn't cover him up before he was in the state. If you did that correctly, nowhere.
I thought it looked good, babe.
Yeah, real good.
Now, why would we need transportation on that one? Because you're adding three days to the contract year, but they're PD days, right?
The number basically is just showing the, the additional day, how it would, how it would flow through the foundation formula and credit transfer. That's why OCE's in there. It assumes all the people in OCE, you know, they may or may not.
You get it, yeah, you get those based on units and so.
Okay.
So it wouldn't necessarily take that.
Just a general, trying to get a general idea.
But that is a place where there could be some savings, because we could probably not use that.
They, they get there to schools every day, so.
The teams salary matrix, so we're, you know, that, we think, as those contracts are coming in, we're not gonna suck up all the money, we did not anticipate we would. But it would, there will be an annual expense built into that, and so we've estimated seventy-five million. If, remember, every math and science teacher in middle school and high school took advantage, it would cost about a hundred and fifty million a year. We think about half are gonna take advantage of it. It's what it looks like now, and it may even be less than half, maybe closer to a third, it looks like. But, uh, you know, some of them don't wanna give up their tenure, a lot of, we hear that from a lot of them, they don't wanna give up their tenure. It's, you know, as, if, as it grows and people become more used to it, then they may be willing to do that. But a lot of people are like, I wanna see how this works before I, before I'm the one that signs the contract. We've heard from some, they don't wanna do the national certification programs, I mean, we, you know, there are reasons they don't want to. Um, and some don't qualify, remember, because they have to be a fully certified teacher. Um, and in some cases, we have a math teacher that's actually, as you know, might be certified in social studies, so they don't actually qualify, so. It'll grow, but right now, we don't think we need the whole hundred and fifty million. The officers for improvement, that's their number. They asked for a million-dollar increase to support what they're doing in those high-need schools. Now, we built out last year and increased the number of them, but they, I could show you that exact budget, but, um, that they really have. Mr. Rutter could show it to us, but they did their budget, Melissa Shield does what she asked for.
Can they share what that increase of what would look like?
Would look like, yes. I don't, can you do that, you and Ms. Martin, get that for everybody? I can't remember what, it was interesting, it was like two hundred thousand for this and that, but it was three different line items, I think, built in that million dollars.
She didn't work, she, she didn't work, she had four. Share.
And then, um, school nurses, I think we've discussed that already, but this would be money for them. And then, um, an expansion of Career Tech O and M, as we expand more into middle school, is just a small increase there to support that. Of course, that gets us to the end. Now, by May though, what I would like to show you, and then we'll come back to questions. So if you go to item three, what you actually would vote on next month is just a two-pager. So what we turn in to the executive budget office is not this whole big spreadsheet. Now, we, we'll share it with the finance director, so he sees our notes and why we want these things. But, but we have to turn in a much more concise, this is what we actually are asking for. So what you see is that big six-page spreadsheet has been put on a two-page. And the reason I wanna point that out is when you get your packet next month and say, how did he consolidate six pages to two, did we cut some things out? No, this is just the format that it goes in. But every line item from the big six-pager is on this two-pager too. So this is what you would actually vote on. But we'll, as we have our discussions with, uh, Mr. Poole, the finance director, we'll include the big spreadsheet so he knows why we need what we need. And how that works is after we do the, the formal stuff, Mr. Craig and I will go over there, I assume he'll wanna do it the same way we, we did it before. But we'll go over there and sit down with him and his team, and we'll have to justify our budget, which he's also getting from corrections and from the Department of Labor and all these departments. But we'll have your notes to justify what I request on.
Do you anticipate the hearing this next year to be in person, um, when you go and speak before the legislative bodies?
Yes, I do. And I think it would be in December.
Okay.
It's usually, I mean, last year was obviously not normal, but we usually will have a hearing in December prior to the legislative session. And then there will be, which will be our budget, basically, we take our budget request and take it to them. Uh, but that'll be before the governor has released her budget to them. And then we will be invited back after she's released her budget to do kind of a, it's a different kind of hearing, like a reaction to that. But the budget hearing will probably be in December, and I think they'll be open this year.
Okay, I have attended one before, and, um, so I was just wondering if you could send aboard those date or the date?
Absolutely. So last year, we presented in person, but the public was not invited to attend in person. I think some of you watched virtually, but and, and so I don't wanna promise, because it may be that'll be the same thing this year. But I know they are opening up more of the committee meetings now even and letting the public come in, so hopefully they will.
Let me, isn't one be the same as three?
It is.
Okay, so we have a board of questions.
Yeah, we're, so board member question, so three is just that, it is that two-pager that is the concise version of everything we just did. And so we're really, yeah, to two.
Okay.
So, um,
Four number of questions?
I know we have some questions about COVID. And I know Dr. Chestnut had some, and I know Dr. Reynolds had some, so.
You might wanna understand that the President of the United States today ordered all employers that employ more than one hundred people, which is a significant number of employees in Alabama, are required to mandate COVID vaccination. The President of the United States using his power stated, anybody who employs, and I don't think that affects us as educators, but I'm talking about the private sector that we are surrounded by, that provides us the funding that we operate with. But that's a new mandate, which you're probably not aware of.
I think, as I understand it, and I don't, he's gonna speak at four o'clock, five Eastern. He will be, for federal employees, they'll be required to have the vaccine. For private employees through, that are, if they're industry-regulated by OSHA, they'll be required, all employees will be required to be vaccinated or submit to weekly COVID testing, one or the other. For federal employees, the COVID testing goes away and they must be vaccinated. I think they have fifty-eight days or something between, from today to do it or something.
There's an impact of all employers, employers of a hundred people, it's also in these news.
And we, so there will be evidently some discussion of vaccines at schools too, a speech later this afternoon, exactly. But I don't know what it'll be.
I'll bring that up, of course, you're gonna talk about COVID and vaccinations.
So it's, it's definitely a major issue, I'll tell you, we, um, y'all know, I mean, our, our superintendents, principals, nurses, teachers, it's just, it's a struggle right now. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you very much, thank you.
It, but the only way out of this, long-term, is vaccinations. I mean, everybody's saying it, there's just no other way. We, we have to have lots more adults vaccinated, uh, and, and we, we have teachers and custodians and some of our people that absolutely refuse to be vaccinated. We, we have lost, we, we have had some students pass away, I can't, obviously, you know, we, we can't confirm that they're COVID-related in specific instances, but I can tell you that statewide, yes, we have had some students pass away this year that was COVID-related. We have had teachers to pass away that was COVID-related. Obviously, I can't say where. And in some schools, we've had more than one teacher to pass away, and it's been very hard emotionally on those faculty. But I talked to a superintendent who'd lost multiple teachers in one school, and he still has five adults at that school that refused to get vaccinated, and they just will not do it, even though they've watched their colleagues go through that intubation and, and then eventually pass away. So it's, uh, I think that's something our employees are struggling with mentally. I mean, mental health is really getting hard. But, so we, we still, we have no intention to require it, I don't think we have the legal authority to require it in the schools. Paying, I know that Dr. Reynolds had asked me, some of the community colleges are, some of our K-12 schools are paying people to stop and to get vaccinated, paying employees to stop and to get vaccinated.
Some of our colleges are paying, paying all students.
Some of the colleges are paying students to get vaccinated. We do not have any K-12 schools that are paying students to get vaccinated. And I don't know for sure if they can, I will tell you, there's been some question about the fourteen-year-old thing. And I wanna clear that up. So under state law, a, a child, a person who's fourteen or older can, they can go to a doctor and ask for a vaccination, doesn't have to be COVID, they can ask for any vaccination on their own without parental authority. But please hear the end of that. But please hear the end of that. The Department of Public Health has said with the COVID vaccine, they will not administer it without parental consent. Now, that doesn't mean if you go to a private pharmacy, because I've been told, well, that's not happening. I know, I know a 15-year-old that went and got it. Well, that's because they went to a private pharmacy, not the Department of Public Health or one of our school-based clinics, and got it on their own. And I can't tell you what private pharmacies will do. I mean, they, they're subject to their own, you know, what they, I mean, they're not violating the law if they do that. So that's up to that pharmacist. But for clinics that we hold in schools and clinics that we're doing in combination with the Department of Public Health, we are not administering COVID vaccines to any students unless they have parental consent. So it's, so, you know, it's one of those things, what's allowed by the law, but then what, we put a layer of regulation on top of that to make sure that, that the parents are consenting if they're getting the vaccine. Dr. Harris and I have had that discussion, but, um, our rate of student vaccinations, even among students 12 to 17, is just extremely low, extremely low. I'm personally more concerned about adults, to be honest with you, because my, we have had children now, and I said, we've had children pass away, we've had children in serious condition at Children's Hospital, and I, so I do worry about children, but we've had many more complications among adults that are unvaccinated. And so I'm really, um, struggling with why we have any adults that weren't in our schools that are not vaccinated. I don't understand it, and I've been very vocal about it, and I will continue to be, and I'll get a lot of hate emails probably this evening, having to answer all this. But, but, you know, it's just, it's just got, we've got to get through this.
Dr. Mackey, can you attribute some of that to the legislature's passing of the passport, which forbids us to do those things? I think that's the opinion that we got from our Attorney General, not our opinion, but the fact that that law is in place restricts us as much as anything from requiring vaccinations for those persons who might put our children at risk. Is that correct?
Oh, I thought you were making a statement.
No, I'm saying, it's my presumption that that is a significant impact.
Might have been.
In communications that I've gotten from Dr. Harris as well, because he and I communicate as a former employer is about that issue, that's a significant issue in the medical community and in the vaccination community. And I have many friends that would be zonorous, would never vote for me if they knew, I was, if they thought I was an advocate for immunization, though I did have my booster shot to.
Good for you.
Because I am at a high risk.
Yeah, well, sure. I'm, I'm sure it probably has been a deterrent, because people are, nobody wants to run afoul of the law. And Attorney General's written a couple of letters to try to help explain that, so people don't accidentally step over the, the law.
But we're interpreting it, since some school systems are doing it, that it's within the legal parameters and ESF parameters to pay a stipend to staff to get, to prove that they have the shot.
We're encouraging them to speak with their legal.
Attorneys.
Yeah, their legal counsel about it before they do it.
But since the ESF program has to come through us, we're not going to deny ESF funding for it.
No.
That would be our role in, in approving the funding.
Right, if they're using ESF funds to do that.
There's two aspects, the legality of it and the funding of it. And I'm talking about the funding of it.
Yeah, we, right, we have no intention to.
So if I have a major school system.
With whole people's ESF fines if they, if they pay stipends to teachers or staff to get vaccinated.
The clarity is the funding, son. I understand the legal aspect. That system, I wants to do it. And I would say ESF funds is the source, and I think they may act on it tomorrow, so don't make the call the liar today. He's probably listening, I assure you of that.
Uh, the other big issue is, is masking, and most of our students are under mask mandates now. All of our big systems are. But now, a lot of them, a lot of districts' boards did it for like a number of weeks, so many of them expired this week. I know that, I talked to Ryan Hollensworth and asked him if he's been hearing, and he said three districts in you had voted to go ahead and extend it through September into October.
Oh, it's bold and common.
But, um, but some of them may let them expire. Um, one is already expired, and the board left it off for a few days and then put it back on because their case numbers went up. So it's, we don't have a good day-to-day count on that, because it kind of changes. But, but we are working with districts on that, if they, as they do more mask mandates. But I will say this, is there's voting the second time to do extensions, we're not seeing, you know, hordes of angry people showing up at meetings like we were seeing at the first round. So I think people do understand we're in a crisis situation, we have to do what we do. We, uh, you know, there is a, we hope that, as y'all know, that the, the spike goes down. We'd still be dealing with it, but that the spike would go down maybe by the, the end of September, was what they were originally. But I listened yesterday, I was listening to the news like y'all, but a national news show, they were interviewing experts, and they think it may be, it may be the end of October or into November before we see the leveling out and they silence anything. So, because our vaccination rates are so much lower than those.
The incidence of severe illnesses among our children are increasing dramatically. And I think one of our major hospitals, if not two, have opened an ICU pediatric unit for the first time as a result of the Delta and the Mu virus, another variant that's coming out. It's more infectious to younger children. The data that many of us based our decisions on is us old invalid people should get first. Now there's a bit of concern about the younger children who aren't subject to any vaccination, but this can be prevented if more of us who are eligible to be vaccinated might be.
Yes, sir. Dr. Chestnut, I know you had some.
What can we do at this level to offer some support? Because when you listen to some of the LEAs, they feel like all the responsibility and accountability has just been passed on to them. And they are overwhelmed, teachers are fearful, as you mentioned, teachers are dying. But it seems that we're given the impression that we have a hands-on, hands-off approach. And we have people who, you know, they're afraid. We already have an issue with, uh, the lack of teachers. You know, it just seems that we need to do more than what we have done. I wish I had a solution, but I, I just feel like we need to do something. You know, how many kids will we have to lose? How many teachers will we have to lose? You know, can we really just sit back and say, well, they have to make their own decision? There should be some common ground across the state that will, you know, explain to parents and the communities, because you have one community that hears this is happening here, and if it's not happening in their community, then they, it's just causing a lot of conflict, it's causing a lot of, uh, concern. And I think we need to consider doing something more than what we're doing.
I'm open to, I mean, I'm open to anything y'all think we can do. So, you know, last year, there's some confusion out there in the public, at least. Like, I get emails all the time, you required, you know, you required masks last year, why are you not requiring them this year? Well, we didn't require masks last year. I can, I do not have the legal authority to do that. Public Health required masks last year, this year they're not. And I, I mean, I don't, I mean, I, I mean, the board probably does have the authority to do that. And through a code rule, but, that would apply to all schools, but I haven't heard, you know, I don't know, I don't know if that would be, I don't know. I don't know. I mean, I, there's that possibility. Vaccinations, we don't believe, I speak for me, Jason, come over here and hit me, baby. We don't believe that the board could even pass a rule to require all the teachers and staff to be vaccinated. We don't think it's legal, um, to do, for you to do that. There's a question about whether the local boards can do it or not. It's not, I'm not saying they can or can't, but we, it's questionable. But because they don't actually work for you, we're not sure. Now, again, and I, Dr. Harris, he's done a great job, in my opinion, in a difficult circumstance, but there are things that are required. For instance, tuberculosis tests. I had to have a TB test before I started teaching, and, and we require that, but I just used the word "we" and I shouldn't have. We don't actually require that, Public Health requires that through legislative authority. And the legislature has somewhat reduced their authority for COVID. So it's not, um, so I don't know, you know, I mean, that's not, I don't know. I, I understand what you're saying, and I do, I, I don't disagree with you that, that a lot of our districts are struggling for something. And I don't know what that is to give them. I mean, publicly, I have led the campaign for vaccinations, talked about it over and over again, talked about the importance of every, every parent sending their child to school with a mask. And so tried to give them some, some cover, if you will, uh, for decisions being made at the local level. But I can't force them to do it. A lot of them want me to write an email and tell, or memo and tell them what to do, but I can't exert beyond my authority either. And I don't, I don't know, Dr. Chestnut. I mean, I, that's a good question, and I'm open to discussion, but I don't know what it is that we can do to help them with those kinds of struggles that they have.
Well, can we make it a priority to begin to look for solutions? I know we can't just sit back and do nothing.
Dr. Mackey, I think one of the things that we've talked about here, might answer Dr. Chestnut's question, and since it does, it depart to my mind, is helping to know, for, first of all, I've attended six board meetings where masking was an issue. And some of those.
Local board meetings.
Local board meetings.
Yes.
And not in official capacity, but as a concerned citizen. But some of the feelings on both sides are very strong and threatening. And I've tried to do two things, and that is to encourage the administrators and the school board members, tough it out. It happens, you know, and there's not much, because we have said that we believe decisions at the local level, like masking, are best done at local level, just like you talked about checking with your local authority. But it's not an easy thing, I agree. And I see a lot of board members threatened, and they're not used to that. But those of us who've been superintendent have been threatened all their lives, so that's not a deal. But it's a difficult situation, but I think one of, some of them we're talking about today may help them. And that is realizing that we can increase the number of nurses available, because we've got some systems that complain they can't hire anybody if they use, if they can use the newer standard compensation rate. And two, that they can implement immunization benefits for their teachers, getting them immunized, which is going to result, in my opinion, that's the only, you can project the decline of COVID-Delta variant among our children by September. I don't believe that's going to happen. I think it'll be January, maybe February. And it's already impacting the enrollment of our schools, it's impacting teachers not continuing to teach. But I think the idea of immunizing more people with a stipend and proceeding with better medical health support will strengthen their options.
Dr. Mackey, I believe you sit on the P-hip board.
I do.
Do you not?
Yes, yeah.
Some companies, um, like I heard Delta Airlines, say that they were going to raise the premium for all their unvaccinated workers. Has there been any talk that P-hip would, um, raise the, the amount that the employee has to contribute to their health insurance if they're not vaccinated?
What do you do with smokers?
The same with smokers, exactly. It was that same idea, was that you cost more for us to care for with healthcare, why should we spread it among all those people who were vaccinated? So if you choose not to, we can't force you to do it. But if you get sick, that cost of care, you should pay, you know, a fair share for.
I will, um.
That may be, that may fall.
I'll ask about that, but I, my opinion is that that would, as a non-lawyer, my opinion is that that would not have, so, so the vaccine passport law says you cannot treat an employee, a public employee, cannot be treated differently based on whether or not they've had the vaccine. And so I think it would be probably illegal under the vaccine passport law. But I will, I mean, we have a board meeting, we have a board meeting Monday, and I'll ask that question. I'll, I'll be glad to ask.
Another potential smoker is a good question.
Well, see, smokers just do it, but, and then, and the vaccine passport law even says that any vaccine that was already in place prior to January 1, 2021, is, that's hands-off. So polio, measles, so if, if P-hip wanted to come back and say, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna, you're gonna charge you because you don't take the measles vaccine, they could probably do that. But any vaccine that's been added since January 1 of 2021, not just COVID, doesn't say COVID, any vaccine that's, that's added going forward for forever cannot be, we can't treat people differently whether they get it or not. So, so if they're, yeah. So I think it would probably not pass muster, but it's not, we've not had a discussion on it. We have a board meeting on Monday, and so I will.
Well, I just didn't know if that had come up, and it perhaps could be an incentive for those people, especially now that it's not an emergency anymore. You know, that it's a, it's been fully approved. Um, because some people, I think, were holding off because it was still under that emergency status. But it's no longer in that, and, and so, anyway, like I say, I, I know some, some companies have done that. So, I don't know.
Okay, now, it's a good question. But, well, I'm, it may not be, it may not be a law.
It may not be legal.
I think it is a good idea. I will ask about that. And I think we have to generate, we got to generate ideas. Some will work, some will won't, but we got to generate some ideas out there. I mean, we've got to get a lot more people vaccinated. I'll get a lot more people vaccinated.
Dr. Mackey, how are we reacting, or is there a reaction to the, some legislation, to answer your question, which is going to, which is apparently yet more steam than I, than I perceived it would get, and we're, and forbidding masks in schools? There's a bill prefiled with a number, what number sponsor? Which will pre, it's by Representative Sorrell in the Florence area, which will forbid masking. And I, there are a number of other issues, initiative that may well maybe be on the call to the legislature. And Mrs. Sorrell wants it to be part of the pre-call for the reapportionment, but I don't know if that'll happen. But are we, in support of systems, advising the people we have in contact with about this, these kind of impacts?
I mean, I said publicly, I, I think that ought to, I, I would like for the legislature not to take that authority away from local boards. But I did not, I was very cautious, I did not speak for the board, because I was told not to speak for the board on that issue. But I, speaking for Eric Mackey, State Superintendent, I would like for the legislature not to take that right away from local school boards. And I think if, if y'all feel the same, it'd be good to, I'd love that support, but.
Well, we'd love to give it to you. I mean, to say that you're going to pass something that takes away the liberty of a LEA to say, we're requiring a mask, we're going in the opposite direction. Let's find a solution.
Some people feel so strongly about that. That's why they didn't have them wearing the mask.
Dr. Chestnut, would you think it would be appropriate for us to pollinate a resolution saying that we want to retain masking as a local school board prerogative? Because right now, we're not caught up by that, we just say it. So.
Especially if you have something on the table.
If you propose it, I'll agree with you, but I think maybe we, I keep, I tell everybody we've left it to local schools, and they say, where is it written? I say, I don't know, wherever Eric Mackey writes it, you know.
We can do that.
See, I can say that.
I mean, we can prepare a resolution. I mean, we can prepare a resolution for next month's work session to, that we bring it up then before the, before the legislature convenes. I doubt it would be added in special session, but I don't know. I'm not consulted on the special session agenda. But it's unusual in a reapportionment session to add anything but reapportionment.
But if we bring it up at the work session next week, next month, and it gets public attention, then we speak favorably for it.
Well, I would love to hear from someone. I heard what you have to say, Dr. Rollard.
Would you have the consensus of the board to want to do a resolution?
That states that we are wanting to retain the local agencies to determine wearing a mask. Is that what I hear y'all say?
That's exactly right.
Based on the information he just gave, that there's a bill on.
There is a bill.
It's a prefiled bill. Now, Dr. Mackey, with the, with the prefiled bill, what if a parent in a school where masking is not required, but the parent wants the child to wear the mask?
It forbids school systems from requiring masks.
So the school system or the parent could still have the choice.
There cannot be an administrative requirement that masking be approved. That's the law.
Okay, just making sure I have clarification on what it said.
Right, and I just wanted to make sure we had everybody, you know, who felt the same way. So we could have, you know, consensus of everyone.
So we'll prepare a resolution that would simply be.
Right. And we need to check with all the subjects.
That would say that you were, wanted to retain the local prerogative to decide whether or not students should be required, not just students, but the people on campus should be required to wear a mask.
We'll check with others, Ms. Bell and Mike Ray.
And Ms. West had to leave.
Yes.
But you're checking with them to ask if they would like to see it on the agenda, not how they would vote.
No, if they want to see it on the agenda, not how they go.
Do verification.
On a work session.
Work session.
Work session. Correct.
That's open windows.
Does it make up?
Right. We certainly wouldn't poll people on how they were going to vote.
No, 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 no.
The question is whether they want to see it on a work session.
Correct, if they're in favor of that.
And their privilege.
Can I ask a question that has nothing to do?
Oh, yes, we got a board question now.
But it's, it's a serious issue. But we had done, I think, like documentation for crisis incidents. Is that like for suicide attempts, that sort of thing? Is that process working? Don't we collect that information? Do I ask? Dr. Rollard, how is that working? Or if you could please just update.
Yeah, come around over here, sit, be close to the table, so Miss McCray can hear, please.
I had a mask, I don't know where it went.
You sit back.
Not a fail, no.
You're good for that, be go, be here.
I'm in favor. So yes, we do have a crisis report that we have. Certainly students make comments throughout the day and counselors and so forth will interact with them. There's a safety officer assigned regionally for LEAs. There's also the mental health service coordinator, we talked about those. So all of these people work in conjunction during the school day to figure out when students make statements or feel certain ways about, you know, whether suicidal ideation. And those reports are generated and kept with the LEA. They submit a copy to us here. We look at that data from the standpoint of trying to provide support and offer guidance, whether it's PD or training or whatever we can do with mental health supports to serve students in those areas. So most districts have been in now at least two to three weeks. Reports are coming in. We have our prevention and support staff divided up by regions. So they have some schools assigned to meet one of our staff members and they support those schools, LEAs, when they're asking for help. Also, our mental health service workers are also getting that information and, you know, providing support within their schools or their LEAs. And then, of course, always the go-to, always has been is a counselor in the school. So, you know, they work closely with them and provide support for those students and those LEAs.
Has it been difficult with students, sometimes virtual, sometimes whatever? I mean, I heard just in my district last year of a few occasions where there were issues at home. When the students were home. Do we have a, a, a system in place that can still protect those children and provide those children with whatever they need?
That's a great question. So there are a lot of tools out there that school districts are purchasing and using for screening and keeping up with that information. I know one where it's an online check-in that kids can do and that information goes to a trusted person at the school and they can still provide support for those students when they're at home remotely. You know, remember we talked about it in one of our previous meetings about how our national collaborations with these organizations provide research and data and I'll share some stuff with you. I'll, I'll put it out for all of you guys in the questions. We talked about how depression and suicidal ideation and all of those things have been on the rise throughout our pandemic-related departure from face-to-face instruction. So we know that, we already knew that. And so some school districts have gotten in front of it and put some things in place to help identify and create support for kids who are at home. And with us going in and out on a weekly basis now, you know, it's important that you do have those things because you may be working with students and then suddenly you're back on a remote. So, you know, we haven't required anybody to buy one product over another. We don't really do that. But we are aware of some that are tech-based that do a really good job of keeping up with how students feel and how they're responding. That worked very well while they're at home.
Do you have all you need?
I don't think we ever have, you know, I mean, we, we certainly put a wishlist together looking at fully funding all LEAs with mental service coordinators, awesome. There's been conversation for a long time. I'd love to pull my friend from counseling, Sean Stevens, to the table. But there's been conversation for a really long time about expanding counseling on all levels so they can actually counsel, because that's always been our first line of defense for a really long time. So Sean, you feel free to jump in and have any conversation.
Great job.
Okay, okay. So when you're asked if we have enough, you know, certainly we'd love to have some of those people that speak our language already, have been in our buildings for a long time, continue to support students in elementary levels and middle levels and those mixed levels from the counseling standpoint, because they are teachers that moved into those positions that have the ability and skill to create lessons and do trainings and so on and so forth. It offers another level of tier one, tier two. So, you know, obviously we can continue to build that up and fortify that. That's going to help tremendously. You know, we don't have a grab and go toolkit. We're, we're looking at, you know, talking about some of those things and recommending it. But there's some great things in place right now where, you know, people are using screeners. They go from the screener straight to an activity or a lesson. They sort of debrief with an adult in the building and then if they need to go to the next step of, you know, tier two or tier three, then a referral is made. So we're sort of building the processes as we're going along. But we don't have a quick grab kit that we can say, use this in case of emergency break glass, use this. We don't have that, but we have some school districts that make some good suggestions and recommendations and we share those. We have our mental health services coordinator conference coming up in two weeks. So that'll be all of them from around the state, you know, providing that we are still able to meet face-to-face, that's our plan. And there's some great sharing of best practices and industry secrets and sort of the things that are working as we look at being one year in the positions. We're one year in with this, with this project that we're doing. So this will be our second one that we do. I think Dr. Mackey will make an appearance to say hello and.
Well, come back afterwards. There might be something so which you, please, that you could say, oh, I found, you know.
Absolutely.
Something like our top ten.
Sure, and I can give you guys some names of some things that we're doing. We can provide some of those names in our stuff that we give to you. But we try not to do sole source.
Yeah, right.
You know, endorsements in public meetings. But, you know, we, we have some that we know are working well and that a lot of districts are using and it's, it's working well. So we encourage people to try what their colleagues are doing, that they're having success in. We encourage you to, you know, copy what your neighbor teachers do. We've always kind of admired and acquired what other teachers are doing well, so we encourage that. But again, we don't have a grab and go kit, because every student in every situation and every environment is different. You know, what works well in one community and with one age group, you can replicate the exact same process and it may not be as well, work as well in, you know, in the next neighborhood. So, you know, kids are unique that way. And so we try to keep that in mind as we're making our decisions to support.
Do we have a mental health hotline or a suicide?
So, yes, there are lines. I wish I had all of that for you, I could share that with you. But that's part of our, our annual trainings that we do. We have one eight, one eight hundred numbers that we supply and give out to them. There are links in place for them, but I could share all of that with you.
I'm familiar with that from other professionals.
Well, October I know is, maybe if there's room in November or December, you can come back with just some.
Well, you guys have asked for us to do a October or November update. So we'll, we'll be prepared for whichever one you guys recommend.
And the hotline is available to kids.
Oh, it's always.
November, November.
Okay, so we'll be back, we can do that in November and get on whatever agenda you guys need. We'll ignore whatever you think, so.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Have another one.
I do, and this is just a request. The, the summer, I'm just, all the, the summer camps, the reading programs that we did, just like Mr. Rollard said with best practices, I, I guess I'd like to make a request that the summer programs, that we could see the ones that have the largest gains from pre, you know, we have approved the pre-test and the post-test. So see the ones that have the largest gain, largest gains and then see if there's common threads so that we can learn what worked best, right? And so then next summer, you know, we, we tell the schools, tell the LEAs, look, this seemed to work well, not force them to do it, but just share the information and the best practices. So again, that, that's just a request. And then one last question was on, I, I love the memo that went out about encouraging teachers to sign up for the Calt and the MSLE cohort. And I was just curious, I think there were thirty-seven slots available. Did we, were we able to fill all of them?
Good question. Somebody may know. Oh, Mrs. Davis is gone.
She had to step out, we'll get that.
We'll find out, yeah.
I love it and I so appreciate it. I just wanted to know if we had good participation.
I don't know if they all got filled or not, but that's good. If not, we need to keep pushing.
Pushing.
And the summer programming, that's a great question too. And we will, we, we have some data now, when the true, you know, as we implement the Literacy Act, we'll talk about it a little bit this next month. We'll have a second test. So we're already developing a second reading test, because the law says we had to have another reading test that we would give students who don't, so if they score below grade level on the third grade reading test and they are not passed on based on the portfolios, which I know the secret was involved in that development, they go to summer, they'll have to take another test at the end of the summer that sees if they can promote on. And so then we will have real apples-to-apples data about those summer programs. And because it'll be, we'll be able to see, you know, this program had, they not only had this many children, but what exactly they scored on the ACAP and on reading and where they scored at the end, which is also, we're having, we're, we're having that developed by DRC so that it ties directly back to the ACAP. So, so we'll be able to see, you know, in, I won't even say a name of a school, but in District A, if seventy percent of their students that had to go to summer reading passed on to fourth grade, but in District B it was only thirty percent, well, what did they do in A?
What was the difference? Right, exactly.
But that won't be, you know, won't be till next summer, but that will be built out. But also, we will, I won't commit them what they can do, but for even the summer camps that were done this year, what data do we have about what? Now, they were different, every, you know, they were all doing different assessments and different things.
But if there were things that worked well, then I'd love to share that with everybody.
There's some fruit that can be picked out of that, I guarantee you. So we'll, we will put our AI folks on that.
Thank you.
Any, any other question?
That's all.
Let me say that we wanna. Okay, let me say this on that one. We, the summer reading and STEM camps, they're going to be a huge piece in, in the COVID recovery and moving forward. And so the more we can glean from what works, the better off we're all going to be. So, and, and that's a very good point. I just, I just want to know that, want you to know we're expanding that thought about what, what can we do in summer to make it not calling it summer school? You didn't call it summer school and I appreciate that. We're people calling it fifth quarter, you know, reading camp, STEM camp. But what can we do to make it not feel like it's summer school and it works to help accelerate students? So, very good point. Yes, sir?
Dr. Mackey, I saw the email that you sent out that went to local super, superintendents where they had to verify their compliance with the number of different laws and regulations.
Yes, sir.
And that's a very, I would, as a superintendent, I would be sobered to have to know I had to sign that on sworn that I checked it out. And I've had people approach me who have seen that document and ask if that's signed by their superintendent and they find that it's not appropriate, what should they do? And I told them I would first start talking to that superintendent. But are we, are the superintendents very certain about the level of responsibility they have when they sign that document?
I, I assume they are, but you certainly hope so. I certainly hope so. I mean, I remember having to sign that document when I was superintendent. It's not something that I signed lightheartedly, because you're saying that you realize as superintendent, it's your responsibility to make sure the district is following the law and that you're implementing the law. And, and then we follow up on that. I look back to Mr. Rollard, I'm glad he stayed, because that comprehensive monitoring is under his section. Paul Gay, who's a former superintendent, leads that work. And we do onsite monitoring, we do desk monitoring. But essentially, just to make it clear, they do at times fall short of that. So for instance, as a, I'm going to use a common example that used to be common and may still be, but fire extinguishers. So when they sign that, they are saying that every fire extinguisher on all of their campuses is updated, inspected on a regular basis and that they are all fully charged, that the needle is in the green zone. I know when I was a local superintendent, they found one fire extinguisher at one of our campuses that was not. Now, did that mean I was going to lose my teaching certificate? No, it meant that I had to, had to have a plan for how I was going to fix that. But it also meant that if they came in, state monitors, and they found that none of my fire extinguishers were charged or that I didn't have fire extinguishers, that, yeah, there could be more serious complications, because technically, you know, a school board could be taken over by this board for failure to do that. A superintendent could be, could lose their license to practice if they are, you know, maliciously ignoring the law. But I would say, Mr. Rollard, we, in, in my time here at the department and in my time when I was at SSA, we never went in and found where a superintendent just flagrantly was like, we are just not going to follow the laws. We're gonna, we're gonna, to use that same example, we're not going to have fire extinguishers and we're going to chain all our doors shut. And they just don't do that. But when we do find they're out of compliance, we make them get into compliance. Is that fair?
So what you're referring to is part of our normal back-to-school process. We send out the, the attestation form. We attest to the fact that we have, you know, acknowledged all of these laws, blah, blah, blah. So what typically happens is it comes out this time of the year, because most of the districts are back in session. Our latest one came in right at the end of August. And most districts do this in their back-to-school professional development, where they have the trainers for Jason Flad and Annalyn and all those things that you're attesting that you will inform your staff of. And so most of that is done per semester. And so that's why we send those forms out, because they can sign them right away and get them back. And then the ones that haven't, they'll have it done by their back-to-school PD in January. So that's why it's on their, their minds right now, because we send it out at the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
And we also do, I mean. Part of the thing is, things like you talk about fire extinguishing, those tangible things. Part of the con, part of the thing is, things like you talk about, fire extinguishing, those tangible things are easy to do. But some of the things that we have, we faced lately have people more interested in this, like the masking and stuff, in checking on local operations. For example, if we say that this particular aspect of curriculum doesn't exist in any school, and the superintendent attests to it, and people contradict that, and I've got one particular system that's been contradicted, how does that assertion of compliance affect that school system?
I mean, if they.
So somebody can complain based on that assertion of compliance?
They can, yes.
All right, number four through twenty-one?
So, yeah, number four. Here we go. So this gets pretty simple, but let me, but now the schedule next month. So four through, fourteen, I think. Four through fourteen.
Recognitions.
Yes. These are presidential awards. Those of you who've been around will remember that we recognize present, this Presidential Program Excellence in Math and Science Teaching. It's a, it's a very special project. We go to lunch, this is the lunch at the Capital City Club. What we're thinking we will do next month is not pass these out, not even bring these up individually, but pass these next month, just have you vote on them as a package and move on. But then we would come back, so this gets complicated. So if you look at, you know, there's several, October, everybody celebrates in October. But one of the big ones is number eighteen, is Dyslexia Awareness Month, and the Dyslexia Advisory Council, we always invite them to come to a presentation to the board that month. So what, what we're planning is this, we would have the meeting. So if you think about four through fourteen being put together, it's not as long of a meeting as you might have thought, but there's a lot of recognitions in there, and then maybe some other things. But we would, of course, we'd have to approve the budget, no. But, but come back here, hopefully be down here by, again, eleven o'clock or so. Let the DAC do their presentation, since so many of them are going to be here for the meeting and then probably want to go home. But let them do their presentation before lunch. At eleven forty-five recess, take you to the Capital City Club to have lunch with these, these Presidential Award-winning people. And we'll split them up so that board members, you don't all sit together, you'll sit at a table with the Presidential winners. And then we would have that ceremony and presentation to them down there. And then come back and do the rest of the work session after lunch. But we would do the DAC presentation, just the DAC, before lunch. And of course, it's a little different thing, like going upstairs, like we can't go to twelve thirty, because we would have teachers waiting for us, other dignitaries waiting for us, the Capital City Club staff waiting to service. So we'd have to break at eleven forty-five and get down there to make it work.
You're going to help transportation?
We'll transport you, yes, sir.
So, and you've spoken to the DAC committee, and they know to come?
I have not spoken to them, but I, I'm, I'm going to pass that on to somebody else. But that's our, first, I wanted to make sure, okay, because if some of y'all said, no, we don't want to do it that way, I didn't want to talk to them first. If the board's okay with that, the next, we'll follow up with the DAC and make sure that that's.
But we can do the resolution while they're here.
Yeah, we'll do the resolution while they're here, and I'm sure that rings.
And then let them talk for a few minutes, and whomever talks to them will give them a timeframe.
Exactly.
And then we'll have, at the work session.
Or we just get up late in the Capitol.
Well, that will work.
So then, so if you see how that works, then, so the, the University of Alabama, Dr. Metzl, Wetzel was here already. We did that. So the other things that we recognize in October every year, it's School Lunch Week. It's also School Bus Safety Week. It will be Manufacturing Month, Dyslexia Awareness Month, Statewide Parent Engagement Month, and you have our Parent Engagement Manual here. And then Charter School Commission nominees, we'll have to deal with that.
Right, because the two that were moved over and the two that were supposed to.
That's right. These come from Speaker McCutcheon.
And the other ones came from.
And they're actually, right, and McCutcheon actually has two sets of nominations in here, so there'll be three seats to vote on next month. Two from McCutcheon, and one from the LCC, yes.
Got to say, one more time.
No more ties.
No more ties.
We'll have one more time next, next month.
So is everybody, does that, that sound okay to y'all? And then we'll talk to the DAC about that presentation and the Presidential Awards thing. And then the work session, remember, I'll have the PAC committee here, and we'll discuss the Literacy Act after lunch. So that'll be kind of a long work session next month, too, to get deep into the weeds on that, but these are, they're obviously really important topics.
Well, we're, we're used to deep weeding.
Yes. Okay, we have one last thing, board members. We asked you on last month if you had comments you wanted to give in reference to Dr. Mackey's survey. That's to go out to various constituents and groups and stakeholders. Some people submitted it because it was due by the end of the month. We are asking you to compile that information, and Nick is here too. He's going to speak about the fact that the instrument will be going out. But anyway, to compile that information and allow, Jason, once you get it, to pass it out to the groups. We talked about like AASB and CLAS and groups like that. It will not be used to help with your evaluation, because that's a separate tool, but at least just to give us feedback, that's what the, what the committee asked about.
That's right. And we're going to ask, so we're going to send those out. Probably will go next week, you know, we can't control participation, but we're going to ask them to get them back in two weeks. Just a quick turnaround. It's just a survey. It's simple.
Yeah.
And, and then what we would plan is in September, I mean, excuse me, in October, so I'm trying to think. October work session, you'll get the evaluation instrument from Mr. Moore. You'll also get, now, we're, we're putting together a kind of a packet of things for you that kind of shows, like some of those things that, that are number-driven, what, you know, what has been done in the last year to help you with that, and then also the, the results of this, the survey. So you'll get a lot of information in September, then, or in October, the October work session. And then for you to have them have the evaluation back to Mr. Moore by the November meeting. That's what we talked about. And then that gives him time to do the compilation, and then you, you vote on the, make it official at the December meeting.
In December.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Okay. So, and any questions on it, just let us know what they are, but we'll get all that together. So kind of a long process, but. Getting to that, we're the last quarter, I know.
That's great. Our work session is adjourned. Thank you.
All right, be careful traveling.
I will. I'm going to give you all one of these before we go. And then it's also not too, we got a lot of opinions.